Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process, and we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number-one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Good evening, and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at exactly 6:30 PM. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager.
So moved to Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, by roll call, please.
Zelinski, aye.
Brown, aye.
Muscala, aye.
Goldstone, aye.
Taylor, aye. And the board will return to session at approximately 6:30 PM. I'd like to reopen the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at exactly 6:30 PM, and the board is returning from executive session. I would ask, please, that you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask, please, if anyone has a cellphone, please silence your cellphones, and please double-check that they are silenced. And secondly, if anyone here is video or audio recording this open meeting session, please notify me as the chair. Is any recognitions from the board?
I would just make a quick recognition of the Cape Cod Commission One Cape Summit. I think they did an excellent job, brought a lot of really important issues to the forefront today, I mean, this past week. And Assistant Town Manager Peter Johnson Stub was there and participated in a, what I thought was a very informative discussion on the wastewater fund, so I enjoyed it. I didn't get to see the whole thing, but it was informative what I did see.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Considerable staff were there as well over the past two days, or those two days, as were Select Board Member Goldstone and I, and it was a very, very informative. I'd like to recognize, actually, the 16th Cape Cod, 16th Annual Cape Cod Bachi Tournament, which was a huge success. The Vicaro family has been involved with this for the past 16 years, and it is supporting and the Joe Q Veterans Community Center. It's a wonderful event. I had the opportunity of actually participating, and they do a very nice job, so deserve a good recognition. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Muscala. Anyone else? Okay, moving along. Any announcements from the board?
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
For the members of the audience and people at home, you're gonna hear some minor beeping tonight. I've decided to go with a regular timekeeping device instead of my phone, so if you hear -- that's what's going on. Nobody run out of the room or think something else. The police are here, so it'll be fine. But that's what you're gonna hear, and I've tried to mute it as much as I can, so it's not a, you know...
And it is to tell you that your time is up for your scheduled presentation. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Anyone here for public comment? No one? Okay. Then we're gonna move right into our committee interviews, and we have, tonight, Sandra Stouts. Welcome, Sandra.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Select Board. Thank you for your service, and thank you for having me. I'm proud to serve on the Falmouth 250 Anniversary Task Force, if selected. I'm a Falmouth resident. I summered here as a child on Cape Cod. My grandmother lived here, my mother lives here now. I have a deep respect for the history of our great nation and this great town. I served for 36 years in the Coast Guard, and I serve on various boards and advisory councils at this time. I have service in my blood, and I believe I could bring to this board my liaison with the federal government, some experience with that. I was in the Coast Guard. I have the connections with our folks back here, should that, I'm sure that will come up as we plan our ceremonies and celebrations. I'm adept at strategic planning, and I'm good at giving advice. Just a joke, 'cause when you're a senior person in the Coast Guard, the joke is, you're always trying to give advice or speak for a long time, but I'm done. That's it. I stand by for your questions or comments.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Aye.
I would just comment that your resume is incredibly impressive, and thank you for offering to serve.
Thank you, sir. It's my honor to serve.
Thank you for your fast service, which is...
You're welcome. My honor.
Admissible.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If that's all the questions and comments, I'd be happy to nominate Sandra Stouts to the 250th Anniversary Task Force.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, and we are way ahead, so I am going to ask the board to allow me to skip to the consent agenda.
You have my consent.
May I have consensus on giving me that permission to take it out of order?
I would agree.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go through the consent agenda. I will read each item. If there's any item that you would like to hold, please notify me as the chair. Licenses. Consider approval of an application for a special one-day wine and malt beverage license. West Falmouth Library Wine Tasting, October 9th, 2024, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Consider approval of an application of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license. West Falmouth Library Community Tree Lighting, December 6th, 2024, from 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Consider approval of an application for a special one-day wine and malt beverage license. Falmouth Theater Guild for Performances of a Day in the Life on Friday, September 27th, 2024, from 6:30 to 10:00 PM, and Saturday, September 28th, 2024, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and from 6:30 PM to 10:00 PM. Administrative Orders. Consider the adoption of the Town of Falmouth Mission, Vision, and Value Statement.
Madam Chair, I'd like to hold that one.
Number two. Consider approving $30,608.68 donation from the Falmouth Together We Can for the Police Department's donation account. I would like to hold that. And C. Consider the authorization to apply for two grants under the Natural Resource Area Nitrogen Sensitive Area 2025 Grant Program. Okay, so I would ask for...
Madam Chair, I'll move the consent agenda with the exception of administrative orders A and B that were held.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay, Ms. Goldstone, for A.
In part, I just feel that adopting the Town's Mission, Vision, and Value Statement is important enough that it warrants taking it out of the consent agenda, and just reviewing, I know this board has had multiple opportunities to look at it, but in the public, to go through what those are. And I also feel, and if I can find the correct page in the packet, but at our strategic planning workshop, we talked a bit about the mission statement and how the mission statement addresses both the mission of the Town of Falmouth, capital T, in terms of being the staff and the organization here, and then also the broader community. And I feel like the language we've ended up with attempts to do those two, but I'm not sure it fully accomplishes what we were talking about at our strategic planning workshop, in terms of what it attributes to our town staff versus what we're striving for in terms of our broader community, and so wanted to raise that for discussion with the board.
Are you making a motion to hold it for another meeting? Can we look at it?
No, I mean, I've just...
I'd make that motion.
To hold for another meeting?
Oh, 'cause it can't be read, readjusted here.
You can't adjust it now. So if you want to hold it for another meeting, you can make that motion.
Yes, please.
Okay?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Okay, so it's four to one. Your motion passes. And B...
Five to one?
Five to one, I'm sorry. Four to one. I voted no. You voted four.
You voted to go forward? Okay.
Yes. My opinion is, we have spent so much time on that, so it is a four to one. Okay, so I held this because I want the number to be reflected correctly, so that the donation amount is $30,608.94, and I know that's a very small change, but I really do want it to be accurate. And with that amendment, I would ask that you approve...
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion to approve Administrative Order B, to change the number to $30,608.94, reflected, to be reflected as such.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
I would just comment, thank you to Together We Can for putting this together. $30,000, a lot of money, so appreciate that.
Bless you, Mr. Muscala.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to accept as amended, and a second. Any further discussion amongst this board? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Minutes accurate will reflect what you blessed me in. Probably the first little bit of time.
Okay, Mr. Muscala. We still have a few minutes. I can't start the public hearings until 6:45. Why don't we go to our minutes? And as long as the board is okay, we can take the minutes out of order. So they are review and vote to approve the minutes of the public session, September 9th, 2024.
I did not find any inconsistencies or need of correction.
I think they did a good job of them myself.
It was a very involved meeting, and I think the minutes were very, very accurate.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to motion that we vote to approve the minutes of September 9th...
I think we might have one.
Okay, no, he's making a motion. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Go ahead.
One tiny typo, page 7 out of 10, first line of vote articles and execute warrant. It says, "referring to the agenda ITE," and it should be "item."
Okay, so would you make the motion to accept the minutes?
Move to approve with that amendment.
Madam Chair, I withdraw my motion, so she can make her motion.
So we have a motion to accept with the amendment?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I abstain. It's a four to one. I was not at that meeting, so I will abstain from voting.
Good time for another recognition?
Absolutely, go right ahead.
Forgot to mention what a nice job the Fire Department did, along with the Coast Guard, for the 9/11 memorial. It was well attended by the chief and town managers and a lot of town staff. It would be nice if a little more general public showed up, but it was still a very nice service, and they improved the amplification on the PA system. That was a good improvement, so I just appreciate them continuing that tradition.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Okay, we still are ahead.
Can we do town managers' supplemental? There's a question, no, no.
Yeah, no, I don't know that we have one.
I don't think we have one.
Yeah. How about item, if you would like, item 11, it might take us...
That would be great.
I don't think it'll take a long time.
Why don't we take number 11?
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Business item number 11, discuss establishment and promulgation of a late fee of $50 for the annual renewal of all on-premise Restaurant Club and inholder licenses and off-premises package stores. So this is just a discussion for the board. We're not seeking any action tonight, and what we are asking the board to consider is establishing a late fee for these licenses, which at present, there is no late fee. The reason that's being proposed is because we do have a lot of establishments who wait to the last minute, and specifically, I can give you some numbers. In 2022, that was admittedly our worst year, but 56% of the 95 renewing licenses remained incomplete in the last week of the calendar year. As this board is aware, if they're not renewed at the end of the calendar year, then the license cannot be renewed. They have to go to a hearing for a new license. So that's a lot of work for both the applicant and for the board and staff.
I have a question about the renewal process.
Is that online now?
It is not. Nope. We are, we have funding to establish that, but we are in the vendor's queue to get that module up and running. We've done some initial work on it, but it will not be ready in time for this renewal season, next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any question? Mr. Muscala?
Would it be a big burden on staff to send out a notice to the holders, you know, reminding them that the license is coming up?
So, there are many, many, many reminders that are sent, both by email and postal, postal. So the emails are weekly. And they start, let's see, reminders of due dates and requirements begin in September. And there are also, the Building and Health also sends reminders, because the process, the Select Board issuing the license is the last step, but in order to qualify for that, they need a certificate of inspection from the building office, they need a certificate from the health office as well. So all three offices are sending reminders.
Do other towns do this?
Late fees? There are other towns that have late fees, yes.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious, given the extra work involved in, not a renewal, but starting over, both, as you said, for the applicant and for the town, do we have any sense of why over half of them are late and risking that extra work in that step? And are we, at this point, as a practice, generally granting them the leeway to be late and still do a renewal, as opposed to forcing them to go back to starting over?
So we do not have the ability to extend beyond January 1. So we're not allowing that, but we have been very accommodating in terms of if they can get everything in by the end of the calendar year in the past, you know, we've allowed that, we've accepted that, even if the vote of the Select Board comes in January, if they've met all of the requirements and submitted everything by the end of December. But, you know, the drive here is... So why do they do it? You know, I think it's human nature. A lot of us, myself included, are procrastinators, and so it's what's the deadline and getting it done by the deadline. So this sort of changes the deadline in some respect.
And I would guess it's also financial consideration. Some of them are a few thousand dollars.
Any other questions or comments? We are not looking for a vote. This is for your information and for us to consider. It will come back before you at another meeting.
I just want to comment that I appreciate that opportunity to see this policy issue as a discussion before we're asked to vote on it.
Okay, we can now move into our hearings, and our first hearing is a shade tree hearing on application of the town engineer for the removal of one red maple to accommodate construction of an upcoming sidewalk, 31 Old Dark Road.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 87, Section 3 and 4, a public hearing will be held on Monday, September 23rd, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass., to consider the removal of the following trees. Location, 31 Old Dark Road. Removal of an Acer rubrum red maple, size 26 and 1/2 inches. Reason, construction of upcoming sidewalk. The tree identified above has been posted for public inspection. Any objections to their removal must be submitted in writing to the tree warden prior to or during the hearing. The mailing address for the tree warden is Department of Public Works, Town of Falmouth, 416 Gifford Street, Falmouth, Mass., 02540. Telephone number, 508-457-2543, extension, 3008.
Thank you, Mr. Zelinski. And I'm gonna ask that the board consider continuing this hearing, because on the agenda it says 31 Old Dark Road, North Falmouth. It should be West Falmouth, and I would like that to be corrected before proceeding with the hearing.
Madam Chair, I'm...
I would ask that the board continue, vote to continue the hearing.
So you're looking for a motion to continue?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to continue.
Second.
And we will continue until, you didn't let me finish. We will continue until October 7th, and you have to say the date. So we have a motion to continue this hearing to October 7th, 2024.
Second.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Sorry about that.
Mr. Zelinski for the second notice.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public hearing notice, the Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetlands Regulation of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Eric W. and Sabrina H. Hamery for permission to construct a fixed pier that will extend approximately 76 feet seaward of mean high water into Green Pond, located at 218 Acapescot Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is Green Pond. Interested parties may review the file on this hearing at the Office of the Select Board, per order of the Falmouth Select Board.
Thank you. And this hearing was improperly noticed in the newspaper, and again, I would ask that the board consider continuing this open hearing until October 7th.
Madam Chair, I move we continue this hearing to October 7th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Okay, we'll move into business. Discuss vehicle idling concerns at the Steamship Authority's Woods Hole parking area with the Board of Health members. Welcome.
Good evening. George Hoyfelder, I'm a member of the Board of Health. You're a little ahead of schedule, so the Chair of the Board of Health isn't here, but basically, we composed a letter to you over a year ago, finally tried to get an audience here. For two years, we've been listening to some health concerns from the people of Woods Hole regarding the operation of the Steamship Authority's parking lot. Number of concerns have come up. First of all, pollution, air pollution, noise in the morning. There's a number of complaints, and we've heard them, like I say, over the last two years. One thing the board is very focused on is the low-hanging fruit. We've heard that they want some research done there for particulates discharged from the trucks, things like that, but the one low-hanging fruit we have identified, and we're asking you about tonight, would be enforcement of the idling laws. The idling laws for vehicles, I don't know if you've been down there early in the morning or toward, during those hot days when the trucks are down there getting ready to load. There are idling more than five minutes, which, of course, the state has an idling law that prohibits that. Cars are doing the same, and there's very little enforcement of that particular aspect of things. We feel that, the Board of Health feels that since the embarkation fees are imposed upon them for the purpose of mitigating any such things in the Town of Falmouth, that we've asked for consideration for an increased law enforcement on those particular parts. But more broadly, I know why they're idling. I mean, it's cold out there, and you want the heat on your truck, and you've got a big container truck, and you've been sitting there for two hours waiting to get on the boat. You gotta keep that puppy cranking. Same thing, if it's hot, you're gonna do it for air conditioning. I don't think it's unreasonable to think that the Steamship Authority should provide areas where people can go and keep warm, go and cool off, particularly the truck drivers who go in there. Feel particularly sympathetic to that, 'cause I sit in a truck for a while, and if the heat's not on and it's cold outside, I do want to idle a vehicle, and so would they. So I think increase two things we would really ask the board to consider, looking at the embarkation funds, for something that would allow for added enforcement down there, so that it wouldn't happen that the good folks in the surrounding area start breathing diesel fuel at 6:00 in the morning when they wake up, and the same when they're going to bed, because we deem that a pretty big health hazard. The particular matters discharged from trucks, they have a good point. It's very expensive to try to monitor that along the pathway that the trucks follow, but of course, that's higher-hanging fruit. This one seems pretty easy. I looked at rough estimates at the embarkation funds, and I think it's certainly within the budget to allow for increased surveillance and enforcement in that area. I've heard the sort of statements that there are plenty of signs down there, they're highly visible, but I would challenge any of the selectmen to go down there and just walk around someday and see. I mean, our Chair walked down there and saw a taxi empty, idling, empty. The driver was gone, went in, done something, and of course, opened himself to theft of a taxi. However, we think that this is, again, low-hanging fruit, certainly the right of the folks in that area to complain about, because if that was this parking lot out here and people kept idling and had big trucks idling all the time, I'm sure we'd hear from the people in the area, and you would respond. So we're asking for consideration in the embarkation funds for added enforcement, if that is from our police department, or if, you know, I could see it being a perfect job for somebody going toward retirement in the police department that had enforcement capability to take care of it, because I've walked down there a number of times, our Board of Health Chair has, and I would challenge you to do the same. You'll see cars idling in long lines for half an hour, 45 minutes, and there's three or four lines and a bunch of trucks doing the same. So that's my story. I'm sticking to it, and that's all we really wanted to bring to you. We know you can't make a vote on that, but we are sincerely asking that you look carefully at those funds. I believe they're a little bit rich at this point, and that you consider helping the people in that area who have to endure those fumes, and actually, our visitors do, you know, it's not that I don't care about the visitors, but the people live there all the time and breathe the air all the time. That's our main focus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoyfelder.
Thank you.
Chief Laurie, did you want to make a comment?
Sure. So, as you know, we've done well hiring, but we're still very short-staffed dealing with call volume. I'm gonna be coming before you in the coming, you know, weeks and months. You know, I want to create a traffic division here that would help with enforcement, also commercial. So the Deputy Chief and I, we did some research today, we made some calls to the truck team. What we're gonna try and do is, we're gonna try to ascertain some of the trucking companies. We believe that probably 50 to 60% of the trucks are coming from certain companies to maybe educate the drivers that we're gonna be conducting enforcement. We'll take a soft approach in the beginning. We're gonna set up a meeting with the Steamship Authority. Again, if we have... Again, if we have to add signage, but maybe they can help us identify to the public. I'll put out to the midnight shift to Sergeant Oliver, when call volume allows him when we can, to go down there to educate the truck drivers. Like he's saying, there are certain vehicles that if they don't have the technology to keep the refrigeration units running with, you know, other means of technology, you know, we can't tell someone to turn off their truck, and then everything inside, you know, gets destroyed. So there's some things we're going to work on. We did receive a little bit of education today, making some calls from the commercial truck team. They really don't want to deal with that type of enforcement, what they're doing, so it is going to be a local issue, and we'll do our best with the staffing that we have. The good news is, October 14th, we'll have nine new recruits that'll be on the road, so hopefully, you'll see, maybe some of you won't want to see their overzealous approach to traffic enforcement, but I promise you, we're going to do our best, but the goal will be, and I love your idea, I can talk about it with Peter and Mr. Renshaw when he gets back. I'd love to have a footbeat down there in Woods Hole. You know, I was down there Sunday for a good part of the day with family. I love it down there, and I'd love to see what you're saying. There are some issues down there. Hopefully, we can rectify with the new parking technology that's going to be going in, and then I would like to, loved at some point in my time here, have a footbeat officer in Woods Hole and on Main Street. I think it's a needed, I think it'd be great for the community and for the department to have someone designated to Woods Hole. We did try this summer, we had bicycle patrols down there where we had a very intoxicated woman on the boat, and we were right there to deal with it. And that was on, basically, an overtime situation with the bike patrol trying to really do a little bit more in the summer to curb some of the issues that we had down there and some of our beaches. So we're going to try to help you with the staffing that we have, sir, but the issue is, we're going to need more people, and we'll talk about that in the coming months.
Thank you.
Did I miss anything? Okay, you sure?
I don't think I could follow that, yeah. Everything.
Go ahead. Questions from the Board, Mr. Brown?
So Chief, would we be able to maybe hire an additional seasonal officer or two with funds outside of your budget, maybe with the embarkation fee?
So, that's a tough one. We do have the CSRs down there, the Community Service Representatives, but some of them, they're very young, and, you know, it can be a confrontational thing, you know, dealing with some of these. I know they have some issues with just issuing parking tickets, so I'd like it to be a police officer. The issue is with the retirees, they really just work details. There is no way, you know, budgetarily, to really pay them, you know, to do it. So it's going to have to be, you know, done with, I believe, our staffing, but, you know, we can try to have them, you know, like I said, we're going to take, we'll take a soft approach, we're going to try to educate in the beginning before we start issuing citations. We want to make sure, we'll do a little bit of education ourselves to make sure we're doing it right, because we don't want to shut somebody down and then destroy $50,000 worth of produce and have that liability, you know, on the town. So with a little bit more research.
Maybe the Steamship Authority needs to hire details.
They could, and they do, in their defense, they do want to hire us, but especially in the summer, it can be tough. Just trying to, I mean, we've been ordered on, you know, the entire staff's working doubles almost daily. So hopefully, I don't have to do that next summer, but it's still, we're still going to be tight.
Okay.
But we'll try.
Thank you very much, and the Board will take under advisement your request. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Oh, you have one more gentleman in the back trying to speak.
Yes, sir?
It's Bob that sends the photos.
I'm Bob Morris. I live at 45 Quisett Ave. We are just about 2,000 feet northeast of the Steamship Authority. That puts us right downwind of the parking lot and the ships. When the drivers come onto the Steamship property, the first thing they see is a sign that I believe the town has put up, and it's been there for years and years, and the sign says, "Heavy trucks, shut off your engines." Now, that's like having a sign at the Otis Rotary saying, "Maseratis, obey the speed limit." We're not going to, you know, it's ridiculous. It's the wrong message. I first appeared before the Board of Health, George, remember, 19 or 20 months ago, and at that time, the Board of Health took a vote, and it was unanimous to come to you folks and ask for surveillance. I respect the Chief and his thoughts about getting the word out to truckers. The easiest way to get the word out to truckers is give a few of them tickets, and they'll tell each other that those guys are ticketing down there for idling. As far as the refrigerated equipment, that's codified in the law. They can run their trucks if they are depending on that for refrigeration or for other power takeoff kind of devices. This is the law. It's a high-impact area, 60,000 trucks a year coming through there, and we're living with it. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move on to the Recreation Committee report. Mr. Brown, I've slated you for 15 minutes.
That's it?
That's it.
Not very good with slides. Do better with charts, but I'll try. My name's Robert Brown, I'm the Recreation Committee Chair. With us tonight is Sandy Cuny, a member of the Recreation Committee for over 30 years. She's the Vice Chair, and she's making me do this report tonight. And first of all, the Recreation Department's website statement.
You can look down, Bob. If you just look down at the screen, it might be easier.
Oh, yeah. All right. Well, in short, the Recreation Department's statement is to emphasize a safe, healthy environment that provides sportsmanship, respect, responsibility, teamwork, while always increasing positive self-esteem, and the philosophy of winning and losing will not be as important as learning and fun for all. I think it's a good statement. The Recreation Committee mission is be responsible for recommending policies to the Select Board regarding comprehensive year-round indoor/outdoor recreation program, policies and programs. Such policies and programs should be designed to meet the recreation needs of children, youth, adults, and the elderly. We always get input from persons and special interest groups, what we really do, and why can't we do this, why can't we do that, and we constantly tell them we're an advisory board, we don't manage the budget, we can't tell the Recreation Director what to do, we can't tell the Town Manager what to do. All we can do is recommend, hopefully, policies to the Recreation, to the Select Board. And here, there's seven recreation members. Sandy Cuny's the Vice Chair of over 30 years. Patricia Morano, she's probably been on the Recreation Committee two or three times, probably about 15 years. I've been on the committee eight years. Mike Haylen, eight years. Scott, Tom, and Richard have been on there for approximately seven years. So we've had a good group of people for a while now. The Recreation Department is closed on Sunday, but that's usually a seasonal thing, and it'll be opening up on Sunday soon. This is their hours of operation. And the next slide is a great slide. You'll see the gymnasium floor is being repaired and replaced, and the roof is fixed, and we want to thank everybody, the town, the Select Board, Town Meeting, for the funding for that. So it's looking good. It's, I'm not quite sure if it's finished yet, but they're working on it, and it'll be a good place for the children as well as indoor pickleball. Our meetings are second Wednesdays of the month, and they're at 7:00. We do change meetings sometimes for around-town meetings, so we're in this second week, sometimes it clashes. In March, we usually have a meeting towards the end of the month to, sort of carries over into April. Our meetings are in person, they're not recorded, they're not filmed live. I personally think it'd be good if the Recreation Committee was on FCTV as well as Community Preservation. I think it'd be good advertising for what the Recreation Committee does, and especially what the Community Preservation does for funding, for recreation, and for other, and other things that they can fund. A little slow on the slides. So next, our Select Board liaison, Attorney Mascali's wonderful. He's like the greatest of all-time GOAT liaison for the Recreation Committee. He comes to almost all our meetings. He's maybe missed maybe one or two, and he goes to many of the Community Preservation meetings too, but he doesn't have Sam Peterson Patterson beat yet on that. So that'd be a big order, but we very well appreciate him coming. He gives us input regarding what the Select Board's doing or what the Select Board is not doing, and other things that is good, and we are extremely, extremely grateful for his time. And I always, I said this like a couple of years ago when I did this presentation, that the Select, the Recreation Department is not just about sports or pickleball. We do other things there. They have special events regarding art, culture, science, arts and crafts, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, magic shows, small animal shows, card games, mahjong, and municipal meetings also are held there at the Recreation Department. And it has a very popular teen center. It's one of the most popular square feet in Falmouth after school where children come and hang out, play, and have a good time. And in those days after school, full staffing is very, very important, in my opinion, and in the opinion of the Recreation Committee. We have a new Recreation Director, and she is on fire, and she's doing all kinds of good stuff, and she started, starting us, if I hit that slide right. A new half-day program, it's going to be organized, and it's going to be engaging, dynamic for 58th graders, blending fun activities with social interaction and skill development, designed for students to enjoy their afternoons after school with a mix of indoor/outdoor activities, physical fitness, creativity, teamwork, and personal growth. So, the Recreation Department building issues, I believe the town's doing an inventory and inspection of a lot of the town properties, and we're looking forward to take a good look at the Recreation Department. Has some issues, and the bathrooms need to be upgraded, and other items in the locker room, and we're hoping that a plan can be done, and that can be put into a budget, in a future budget, and also that an ADA assessment be also done too. In regards to the anniversary of the American Disability Act of 34 years ago, focusing, this is Upper Trotting Park here. We have new parking lot there for handicap accessibility. Unfortunately, we don't have any paths. I think the Recreation Committee's been asking for this for approximately seven years, and the field remains noncompliant to the Architectural Access, also known as the AAB Codes and Regulations. It's been a slow progress, so people can get out of, handicapped people can get out of their cars, but they can't get across the fields. We've been complaining about this, advocating for this for about seven years now, and, which brings me to this, that, you know, accessibility at recreation fields that are open to the public is a civil right, and by not having it, are we violating people's civil rights? I think so. I think the time has come that we start doing something. It's the law. In the Capitol, in the Capitol Plan of last year, the Capitol spending priorities, the Assistant Town Manager made a presentation regarding Capitol spending priorities, and one of those Capitol spending priorities is right here, legal requirement of federal or state agencies. The Architectural Access Board is a code of Massachusetts regulations promulgated by the general laws of this Commonwealth. It's the law. We need to do it. I think we should get it done now, amend your budget this year, get a plan, start a plan, get a design, and let's at least fix Upper Trotting Park field. I've passed this out to the Select Board and attached it to letters over the years. This is the code regarding access, spectator, spectator access to recreation facilities. It also talks about portable toilets. It also talks about access to portable toilets, and asks that you read it again and start putting this, putting action into your budget, and let's get in compliance to the law. My next screen is the Athletic Master Plan. This Athletic Master Plan was done over seven years and eight months ago. I've been counting. And here, it talks about multiple-purpose synthetic turf field that we need. We have one artificial turf field, synthetic turf field at the high school. It says we need three, or we need a bunch more grass fields. It's going to be in our budget soon regarding a plan and a design, and eventually, hopefully, it'll be budgeted to have it done, Upper Trotting Park field, and I hope the Select Board and Town Meeting and the Town of Falmouth will approve it, because we're beating up the fields at Upper Trotting Park, we continue to beat up the fields on Sandwich Road, and we can't keep up with it. And with the new synthetic turf field at Upper Trotting Park, I mean, we could have year-round recreation for youth soccer, adult soccer, lacrosse, adult lacrosse, and I think it would get great use, and I think it'll be a great thing for Falmouth. And next is, talk about the playgrounds. Recreation Department has three playgrounds that they're basically in control over. The one is the SBL, the George Gaspa Field, that has been complete. We want to thank the DPW and the Falmouth Road Race for helping get this job complete. The Fuller Field is complete also. It was moved originally from where the senior center now is. This site requires good lighting, security cameras, and good signage to deter vandalisms. It's had two events over the, since it's been built, and we'd like to keep that as best as we can free of vandalism. And then the Falmouth Community Play Space, developed by, you know, advocated for by Kathleen Haynes. This is going to be at Goodwill Park. We're hoping that everyone could support that also. And we'd like to thank Kathleen Haynes for all her work that she's helped us with over the years regarding that. And this is our wish list. We're hoping that all recreation sites and playgrounds be safe and accessible, that the Falmouth Youth Baseball Fields be supported by the Select Board as well as Town Meeting so we can complete Phase Two. We're hoping that the Woods Hole Bell Tower Tennis Courts and ADA accessibility, accessibility be approved at November Town Meeting as well as supported by this Board, and that the Recreation Department have full staffing, and that new synthetic grass field for the Recreation Department use. And most importantly, from what we hear from many people, new pickleball courts well-built and located in a manner acceptable to neighbors, and more seasonal indoor pickleball hours and programs, and new furniture for the Recreation Department Office and Teen Center. I sent you my report. I wanted to, I cut some of it out to get through it all quick, but we also want to thank the DPW and the Recreation Employees for another good year. And right here, we'll end, and these are three children that were down at Falmouth Heights playing soccer two weeks ago. And did I make the time?
You are good, but we may have questions. Questions or comments from the Board?
Have we just commented? It seems like every time we talk about these recreation things, I think the Board is supportive of the initiatives. Just seems like there's trouble getting the contracts completed. Have we taken up the issue of the paths on Trotting Park?
They are included in the synthetic field project. I don't know that they were included, so that project was approved by Town Meeting. Bob may remember better than I. I think it was two years ago, and I don't think it was in the scope initially, but it is in the scope now, and there is a request for supplemental design funds for that project going to Town Meeting for this November.
Okay.
That was one of my questions, where are we with ADA compliance? And my second question is... And my second question is, how often is the teen center used by teens? Does anyone know?
Probably every day after school.
Okay.
And then they, they do have special events.
Okay. I'm just curious. Any other questions or comments from the Board? Mr. Brown?
If we had the other two staff positions filled, what would we be doing? Longer hours, Sunday hours?
This one of the slides, this one of the slides that I skipped, but we've received, I've received an email that, that those positions are going to be filled and there's going to be, if I can look at my notes.
I'm actually going to ask Mr. Johnson Staub because I had a question about that. So I would ask you to speak to that, please.
Sure. So we have currently one vacant position that's budgeted. One of the two Program Director Positions is now vacant and the Town Manager has recently approved filling that position. So there's been a little bit of a back and forth over the years on recreation staffing. So back, when I arrived, so late 2016, early 2017, we had an Assistant Recreation Director and two Program Directors. And then Joe Lenick was promoted to Recreation Director. And instead of filling the Assistant Recreation Director, it was filled with a third Program Director. So the easy way to think of it is the Assistant Director converted to a Program Director, giving us three Program Directors. And then a couple of years ago, the, one of the Program Director Positions became vacant and it was returned back to an Assistant Recreation Director. So the full complement of staffing is the Recreation Director plus three, full-time, if you will, leaving aside the administrative staff support. So we have two Program, we have an Assistant Recreation Director filled. We have one Program Director filled. We have one Program Director vacant.
Thank you. I was confused about one or two. Thank you for that explanation.
My count is that we're, we're missing two. I believe when I started, there was a, there was the only, the only, there were three Program Directors and the Assistant Director was acting as the interim, interim Director. And so I think we lost one position during the course of eight years. And I think Sandy would also know better too.
We can look further into that.
So, but I, we are excited about an enrichment in Special Events Program Director concentrating on that. And, and we're excited about sports program. I think a lot of sports programs that were running prior to COVID-19 is not running now. They were using outside vendors to do the programs. And I don't know if they can, if the Program, the Program Director Staff should be able to do it if they can't get vendors in. It, it didn't look like very complicated activity to organize for children. And I think they were even using the Recreation Department's software to sign up for it. So I think one of the things that, that's been lost for the last couple of years was flag football, like in November, December and, and January, February after school on, on a Friday night and the place would be jam-packed. It was a, it was a nice event. These are, hopefully the new, the new Director is very engaged. I'd say we're very impressed and I think Sandy would agree with me and, and she's made a lot of things happen already, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Business number three, consider the approval of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Application, 545 Main Street Bush, Bushwood, 545 Main Street LLC. Mr. Johnson Staub.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I know the Board is very familiar with this project and many community members are as well. I won't go into too many details about the, the project, but I, I will just briefly summarize to say this is 545 Main Street and the, there's, the Board has asked to act on a funding request today. The proposal is for 30 deed restricted units. That's what the town is being asked to fund. Of those, eight are at 80% of area median income and the other 14 can be above area median income. The applicant has proposed 14 at 120%. And as the Board is aware, the staff, the Town Manager's recommendation is three at 100% and 11 at 120%. And the only reason for that change is because within the fund, we manage two separate accounts. And the, one of those accounts is the Community Preservation Fund Account and that can only be used to fund 80%, sorry, up to 100% of AMI. And in order to be able to fulfill this entire request with the balances that we now have, we would need to use CPA funds for 11 of, of, of the units being requested. So hence the shift from 14 to 11 for, at the 120% AMI. Let me also just summarize process-wise what has occurred to this point in terms of the funding request. The request went before the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group, met with Mr. Galasso and the, the Working Group and the Town Manager are recommending and have recommended since that first meeting, full funding of this request. However, there is one significant difference in that the Town Manager is requesting the timing of those, of the funding award be different than what is proposed, namely less for land acquisition and more for construction. So the applicant initially requested 2.1 million for land acquisition and the Town Manager recommended 250,000 for, for land acquisition. That recommendation went to the Community Preservation Committee and the, that Board had significant discussion about the timing and ultimately the Community Preservation Committee voted to recommend the full 2.4 million dollar amount, but did not act on the timing of the request and asked that the Working Group revisit that and then left it to the, to this Board, the Town Manager and this Board to make that determination as to the timing of the allocation. So let me just comment briefly on the reasons for the Town Manager's recommendation, again informed by the Working Group, for having less of the 2.4 million go toward land acquisition. First, it is very new this year that we're providing any funding for land acquisition from this fund. Traditionally, it has been at construction. And there are, there are two issues that arise with providing funding earlier in the process, which is to say at land acquisition. One is, is risk. Housing projects are complicated and there are often many funders. This project in particular is complicated with multiple funders. So the, there is a risk if the town is putting money forward before the applicant has full funding secured and is ready to begin construction. And then the, the second concern is timing. So the town has a limited amount of funds to use to subsidize housing and of course we want to get the best return on that investment that we possibly can. The longer the money is tied up in a project that has, and, and again, housing projects are complicated. It's not unusual for it to take two years between the award of the fund, the funding from this Board and final construction. But if we're going earlier in the process at land acquisition, that's potentially going to extend that timeline longer. So that's more time that those funds might have been used for another project. So that's where the concern comes in. And then the, the third element just related to risk is our ability to recover those funds is, is limited. There, you know, there are things that we can do. We can structure the award as a loan. That helps to improve our ability to recover the funds, but Town Council can speak to the limitations. It's not guaranteed that we would fully recover all of those funds in the event that a developer is unable to complete the project. So with that, the recommendation that you, that we have before you, I just want to say again publicly that I commend Mr. Galasso. This is, it's a very difficult, complicated project zoning-wise and construction-wise and funding-wise. It's also a very exciting, important project for workforce housing. So the Town Manager is recommending 2.4 million dollars. And again, the only separation between what the developer is requesting and what the Town Manager is recommending is a timing issue.
Questions from the Board. Mr. Galasso is here to answer. Any questions from the Board? Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
Is there any negative impact to you on the restructuring of the funding?
You mean getting less than what we requested?
Well, you'll still be getting the same amount, but at different increments, different times. Will you still be able to make it happen?
Yeah. So, you know, I've got this PowerPoint presentation. I won't even go into it because I think the important issue tonight is really the allocation of the funds. First of all, Michael Galasso, I'm the Managing Member of 545 Main Street LLC and I appreciate all the effort that the town staff has put into this project. The Town Attorney helped us tremendously getting through our ZBA. So I want to just make sure. And I thank the town for considering our application for 2.4 million dollars. I know that's a lot of money. The issue that we have right now is more about timing and there's really two things. One, you know, we've been out to 20 banks to get an acquisition loan, very difficult to get. Some banks won't even do acquisition loans. If they do an acquisition loan, it's 50% of the appraised value of the property. That leaves us a gap of about 2,400,000 for this particular property. That's a big gap for us to fill. You know, we have funds that we're allocating towards moving our project forward, getting the plans all done, construction drawings regularly, ready, applying to different sources and everything, but it's that gap for us in order to close on the acquisition of the property. We have a seller who's been very patient for us. We've had this property on the contract for over two years now. As you know, we spent an enormous amount of time going through the planning process and getting our ZBA approval and that's really stretched them out. They've been very supportive of the project. I mean, the local folks, they have a number of nursing homes here in town, but they have other commitments they need to make and they would like us to move as quickly as we can to a closing. So it's trying to fill that 2,400,000 gap that we have between what we know that we can get from a bank. And we have a number of term sheets from two, from two lenders who are willing to lend us the 2,400,000. And we've identified some sources for the balance of the, of the 2 million. You know, some of the equity that we would put in ourselves and we may even get the, the current owner to hold some, a mortgage back for a small amount too. But we really do need to have a larger commitment from the town for the acquisition part. We hope that we can get up to 850,000. What we'd like to suggest is that maybe you ask the Town Manager to work with us as we put together the other pieces and set a cap of 850,000 because there's still pieces that we're putting together. The other issue that we now have too that's come upon us is that we now have a deadline. If Article 15 on Town Meeting gets passed, we would lose 37 of our units. We'd be down to just 30 units. So we are now racing to get our building permit and to start construction by June 20th. That's the anniversary, one-year anniversary of our ZBA special permits. So we're really concerned about what Article 15 may do. That's a revision to Mr. Cod, but it, it would reduce the density we could put on our property to just the 30 Mr. Cod units. We would not have the other 37 seasonal units that we currently have in our program. So we're under a lot of pressure timelines to move this project forward as quickly as possible now. I mean, it sounds like June 20th is far off, but it's not. We believe we can make that deadline, but that means that we've got to allocate more of our resources towards getting the plans completed and getting ready to pull the building permit and start construction. So we've made great progress on this project since we got ZBA approval. We've got the building designated historic. Getting it designated historic means that it qualifies for historic tax credits. That brings almost 5 million dollars of equity to the project. So we're making good progress. We're constantly talking to Mass Housing, Mass Development to help us along. They're all very strong supporters of the project. We're just asking, and I think there are a number of people here this evening who want to speak to the, the issue too, that you just give us a little bit more leeway on what we can use towards acquisition. The two other projects that you did allow funding for, for acquisition were between 25,000 and 60,000 per unit. We are at about 28,000 per unit for our request at 850. So I hope you would take that into consideration. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the Board? Go ahead.
Mr. Galasso, so.
Yes.
On the premise that we're working under an existing special permit that was granted by the ZBA, right?
Correct.
So if, if Town Meeting recertifies that rule, does it change the, the elements of your special permit?
Will we change it?
Would it change the elements of the existing special permit?
Yes, it would if we didn't have our building permit by June 20th.
Would it have to go back to the ZBA to be redone?
I'm not sure that it's economically feasible. It would, if. Yeah. That's, might be a legal question more for, for the Town Attorney.
I'm asking, does it nullify if they changed due to recertification at Town Meeting?
Yes.
Does it null and void your special permit?
It does after one year since we got the special permit, which was June 20th.
If you don't act upon the special permit in one year, you have to wait two years or start over, correct?
We would have to start over under the new modifications to Mr. Cod. I believe that's correct.
I have one more question if I may.
Go ahead.
And this is to Town Council. So you had spoken to the matter of risk, why we were allocating the percentages the way we were. Where does, if, if, if we gave money towards the land acquisition, where does that put us on the lean tree? How far down the lean tree are we? Pretty far, right?
It would depend on the, the funding received from the bank, whatever banks Mr. Galasso is talking about. We'd be after those priorities. We'd be at least second in priority, if not third, if there's more than one funding at the top. That really does put the town in a difficult position if the project goes sideways and my office is required to foreclose on the loan in order to recover the funds that are granted for acquisition costs.
Should we have to stand in line?
We'd be in, at least second in line and maybe third.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Ms. Goldstone?
I'm curious, Mr. Galasso, you were talking about the options for acquisition. What about your funding options other than this disbursement from the Affordable Housing Fund for the construction costs?
So we have, as I mentioned, we have almost 5 million dollars committed for the historic tax credit. Of the 17 million dollars, we've got with your commitment, our lending commitment from Eastern Bank, we're about, we're about 15 million dollars semi-committed either with letters of intent, term sheets. So that's, I think we made some great progress to do that. We're having constant conversations with, the, the problem with this project from a financing standpoint is that many of the funding sources that the state have don't allow funding for projects that have seasonal housing. Now, in the current bond, housing bond that passed, they do have a provision to start looking at funding projects like this. The Secretary Augustus is using our project. He toured it in November, has an example of other projects they want to see built, not only here on the Cape, but also in the Berkshires to help house their seasonal workers. So that's why that provision is in the housing bond. So it has a lot of attention. They're looking for funding to make this project work. They want to see they, I mean, you know, his office, Secretary Augustus' office, to make this project work. And they're helping us jump through some hurdles about finding funding that works for a project that has mixed uses like we do.
I'm going to go, you go one more? Take your next question. I'll go to Mr. Brown and then Mr. Mascali. And I have a few myself.
Given the time constraint, you were mentioning the, the June date to start construction, what would you estimate is, are the chances, if you had the additional funds for acquisition, what are the chances you could start by that, start construction by that June date? And if you don't have that extra funding for acquisition, what are the chances that you would make that?
Well, I will tell you that our plans have advanced to the point where we're out for our bids, our second set of bids and everything with Callahan Construction. They're a general contractor. They're going to be prepared to start in June. Our plans will probably be ready to be submitted to the town for building permit probably in February, March. So we're moving towards completing that part of the project and we're constantly, every day, having conversations with other funding sources in order to fill the current gap that we have. So I, I think that we can get there. You know, if we continue to work hard as we have, I think the help of Secretary Augustus' office has been very helpful. Our state representative, Dylan Hernandez, Fernandez has been very helpful too and so has Susan Moran. So everyone's working towards getting this project funded, getting it started. It's an important project, not only, it is for us obviously and for the town, but it is for the state too. So we're all working to, to do that. And that's why, you know, my comment was if you would give, give us a little bit more latitude in using some, a little bit more of the money for acquisition and let us work with the Town Manager, you know, I'm saying that we could use 850,000. We might be able to get that down as we go through, you know, this, this process. Mass Development has a program where they'll guarantee a, a loan. If the bank says they'll only go 50%, they'll. If the bank says they'll only go 50%, they'll guarantee that gap between 50% and 80%. So that gives us more money right there. So it's helping us close that gap, too.
Mr. Brown?
We approve this as recommended by the Town Manager's Office. Can you then leverage that sort of preapproval or that guaranteed money to get a different loan for the $800,000 to get you through? I hate to go against the advice of our professional staff...
Sure.
But at the same time, I don't want to see this project fail for lack of support, so...
Well, I, I think you know me well enough that this project won't fail. I mean, I continue to work on it, you know, I appreciate everything that you've done for us. It would help if we can get to the 850. I'll continue to work and close that gap with whatever sources I can find. But, you know, having the 850 gives lenders and other people more confidence in the project. You know, and the whole idea, when this fund was first established, was to use our local money to leverage other funding sources. And so that helps a lot, and, you know, my original application was to use all of it for acquisition, and, you know, we've come down quite a bit off of that. So I will continue to work on this project. I'll continue to try to find sources. I'll continue to work with our seller to see what they're willing to do, too, to continue to narrow down that gap. Having the 850 makes it a little bit easier in order for us to achieve that, and probably in a quicker way, too.
Mr. Muscally, did you have a question?
Similar question to that.
Oh, okay. So I have a couple of questions. The acquisition cost, what is the acquisition cost?
$4,001,000.
$4,001,000. Okay. I just wanted that confirmed. And then you're asking us for 850. And then you put in your, in your paperwork that the balance of the funds for the purchase of the property will come from an acquisition loan from one of our lenders. How much would that loan be for?
Right now, we've got a letter of intent from one bank that we're talking to at 50%, so $2,001,000. We're asking them, I just mentioned, we're asking them to work with Mass Development to see if they can increase it from 50% to 80% loan to value, so that will give us a couple, a couple of thousand.
Okay, and that's through what bank?
Stoneham.
Okay, thank you. And then what, and then you say, "and equity contribution from our partners." How much is coming from your partners at this point?
250,000.
That's all?
Well, that's because we're also funding all the other costs associated with moving the project ahead. All the architects, the engineers, the permits, the appraisals and all that. So altogether, we'll probably have, at the end of the day, we're going to have more than $5 million into it.
Okay, but right now, it's 250,000 that the partners have put in.
On the acquisition part?
On the acquisition part of it, yes.
Exactly. But my point is, they're asking the town to put 850, and the partners are putting in 250. So the risk benefit, that's my point.
Well, just for the land acquisition.
That's all I'm talking about, which I asked him to confirm the number for the land acquisition. And then a portion of our request would be set aside in an escrow account or held back by the town as an interest reserve for the interest payment on the acquisition loan. How much is that? Tell me...
I think it's about, if you're looking at the chart, I think it's about $100,000.
Okay, and that, that is okay to do, to hold back $100,000?
I'm not sure I understand what that portion of the funding is about.
Well, it doesn't, we have to, of the total amount of funding between the lender and us and the town, we have to set up an interest reserve account in order to pay the interest on the loan from the bank. So that money doesn't necessarily have to come from the town in order to do that. That money could be drawn out of the loan we get from the bank.
Okay, so it may not impact the 850 that you're requesting?
Right.
It just seemed odd to me that it would be, that out of the, either the 250 or the 850, or whatever the number is, that a certain amount of that would be, would be held back.
Well, town funding can only be used for, to go to affordable housing. It cannot be used for interest payments.
But that's my point, and my question was, is this a permitted use, I just didn't get there, of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund?
No.
Okay, so it could, that's, it can't come from the money that you get from the town?
Yes, correct. We would not use...
All right, that, I was confused.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. O'Keefe. That was a concern of mine. Any other questions of Mr. Galasso? Go ahead.
Mr. Galasso, so, back to my original question. So when the special permit, say you do come in under the gun with the existing special permit, this creativity with funding, how does that, how does that affect the original pro forma?
Well, we adjusted the original pro forma because we originally requested 71 units, and we're down to 67. So we're currently, and the pro forma that's in your package is the current pro forma that we're working on.
And that's the one that was approved by the zoning board?
Well, because this is not a 40B, so the zoning board did not look at our financials.
It wasn't part of that permit?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, your time is up, but do you have a question? Go ahead.
I have a question. I know you've explained the reasons for your recommendation, but is this a decision that we can make if we want to take on more risk because we believe this project is important and shift these parameters on this money?
Yes. And I know there are some folks that wanted to speak to the project, so I try to keep my time very short.
Mr. Galasso, I understand that you're going to have to wait. Be patient with me. Go ahead. I want you to answer the board's questions.
Is this something that if we put it over to think a little bit more about it in line with what Mr. Brown's just mentioned, is this something that we could put over to...
I think, Mr. Muscally, that I already put it over one week, much to Mr. Galasso's disdain, he was upset about that. So I think we are going to have to make a decision tonight, is my understanding. Am I correct, Mr. Galasso?
You know, if you put it over to the next meeting, that probably goes far as I can stretch it because it's really the seller who's pushing this. Yeah, because...
So you're saying we could put it over to October 7?
We could if you think it would be beneficial to put it over, and...
That was not what you explained to me when I moved it from the...
Well, no, it's still the same issue, but I think if the seller knows that we're making progress, I think that helps.
I'd certainly like to explore with, or have the town manager explore maybe some ability to, you know, work a little bit further to, to help Mr. Galasso close that, close that gap. We know it's an important project. We've been very supportive of it. It raises a lot of, you know, issues that we've never faced before, and not the least of which is, you know, such a huge amount of money for acquisition. So I'd be willing to see if we could put it over for...
So let me let Mr. Brown speak, because I hear yours, and then you can think about making a motion. Go ahead, Mr. Brown.
I also want to point out that this project is, we're asking to be funding 30 units at 2.4, so that's less than the top of our limit. Plus, there's another 37 units of potential summertime workforce housing, which is very beneficial, I would say. I think the town manager has given us a good explanation of the reasoning behind their recommendation. I don't think there's really much more time for, needed for thinking and talking about it. I think we just need to decide if we want to take on more risk, if we are, we feel that this project's important enough that we use our better judgment.
We're talking about...
Hold on one second. I'm going to let Mr. Johnson speak, and then I'll come back to you, Mr. Muscally.
While we have been supportive of this project, and we want to throw a pile of money at it, you know, to make it work, there are still other smaller developers out there that we have to protect our risk potential with being able to fund other projects in the future, too. So with that given, I would, I'd be happy with the way it is written right now, but I wouldn't... Land acquisition, especially these days, is a risky business, and by way of the explanation by Town Council, if we're not first on the lean tree, I am very concerned about throwing that out there.
We're never going to be first on the lean tree. I mean, if there's going to be, I mean, where there's a commercial development and a lender...
This isn't a precedent I want to set financially with a project this size, Bob, is what I'm saying.
I mean, to Mr. Brown's point, though, I mean, we're also being asked to commit to 2.4, which gets us to the 80, you know, $80,000 for the 30 units. The question is the risk that the town is taking by giving more than the 2... I mean, listen, 250 is a risk, you know, under all circumstances, just as much. You know, it's just a bigger number, but the risk remains the same. I'm just wondering if there is, you know, a way to, you know, close the gap a little bit. Maybe, you know, we heard Mr. Galasso say that developers are putting in a substantial amount of money over the term of the project. You know, I was certainly concerned that it's only 250 at this stage, whereas we're being asked for 850. I mean, that's a concern, so, you know, I think a little more time if Mr. Galasso is okay with it to, you know, to see if there's some way that we can, you know, narrow that gap and help the project move forward. I will say, though, that at the, at the planning board meeting with the discussion about the changes to the Mr. Cod bylaw, Mr. Ahmet, your attorney, made a very forceful and, I think, persuasive argument that consideration be given, you know, with respect to the changes to the Mr. Cod so that your situation would not be negatively impacted by a change. And I, was my understanding in speaking to the town planner that, you know, he felt that that might not even be necessary. But certainly another issue that, you know, that I'd like to have a little clarity on as to that deadline and the impending Article 15, so I'd make a motion to...
Can I, can I hear from Mrs. Galasso first, real quick?
Question for fellow board members and Mr. Galasso. One thing I'm hearing is that the imbalance between the amount that is being contributed by the equity partners to acquisition does not match what we would be contributing, but they're contributing to permitting and design. If I recall correctly, we amended the rules for the Affordable Housing Fund so that we can also contribute to permitting and design. Would there be an amendment here to say less for acquisition if you'll put more equity into, more from the partners into acquisition if we can allocate some from the Affordable Housing Fund for permitting and design? Make the contributions by the town and the equity partners more equitable?
Definitely a discussion we'd love to have with you. Sure.
That's exactly what I was looking towards, to see if there was a way to get to that, you know, an acceptable number.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson Staub.
So, a comment and then a question for Mr. Galasso. In terms of the risk profile, it doesn't change anything whether we call it permitting or land acquisition, so I wouldn't see that as a meaningful change in terms of the town's risk. You know, of course, speaking for the town manager and myself and the rest of our staff, this is a really important project. We're more than happy to spend more time working with Mr. Galasso if we feel like there's a way to help to move this forward. From what I'm, everything I've heard so far, I think it comes down to risk tolerance. I don't know that there's, you know, sort of new ground to cover or, you know, new ideas. It's, you know, there might be more time for Mr. Galasso to secure other funding sources, but that would be true after your vote or before your vote at the next meeting. My question for Mr. Galasso is, I'm a little confused because in this, in the pro forma, the sources and uses for the entire $17 million project shows a developer's cash equity of $250,000. So this money, you talked about putting money into permitting and design. Is that just off books and not in the $17 million project?
No, it's within the whole sources and stuff, so part of it is that, I believe you'll see, there's also a grant on there that you helped us get from Mass Development that's helping to pay some of the pre-development costs, too.
Right, I'm just, you said that by, that because of the money that your firm was putting into permitting and design, that you would be at about $5 million in equity by the end of the project.
Yes, so that's shown as part of the equity from the sale of the historic tax credits.
So not actually developer dollars?
No.
Right.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Mr. Brown, did you want to say something?
I was, my question was going to be, what productive discussion do you think could be had? And I think Mr. Johnson Staub pretty much just answered it. It's really a matter for us to decide if we want to take more risk on the acquisition cost or stay the course with this recommendation.
I would have a hard time putting $850,000 of taxpayer money on the line for land acquisition.
Well, maybe we don't, maybe we don't go that far, but maybe we can do a little better than 250. That was what I was hoping, that maybe the...
But that's the conversation you wanted to have in more time?
That's correct. I mean, to see if there, you know, I mean, I personally think 850 is too much as well, but there may be a number between 250 and 850 that, you know, still risks. We realize that, but...
How about $499,000?
I don't want to be the one to negotiate, but in any event, that's...
So, Mr. Muscally, do you want to make a motion to not vote this so that you have more time?
I would make a motion that we table this to the next meeting and ask the town manager and Mr. Johnson Staub to maybe discuss a little bit further with Mr. Galasso to see if there's some way we can narrow that gap between the 250 and the 850.
Okay, I have a motion on the table.
I would second for discussion, and I would say, can we give a little more guidance? Because, I mean, I'm closer to 500. I think we should have a better consensus of how much board members are willing to go.
But I think that needs to be something we would have a discussion about. I'm not prepared to do that now if you're going to table it and have another discussion and to work with the town manager and the assistant town manager. I'm not at a point where I'd be willing to throw out a number. So I have a motion on the table. Do I have a second?
Well, I second it for discussion, so...
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? And you're okay with that, Mr. Galasso? I'm going to ask you again.
Yes.
Okay.
If it means more money, yes.
The possibility of...
Possibility is good, too.
And another opportunity.
Yes.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Opposed? No. Okay, it passes a three to two vote, and we will consider putting it on the 10-7 agenda. Okay?
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Okay, we're going to move into, consider the approval of a Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application, 48 Benjamin Nye's Lane, Habitat for Humanity. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a project with Habitat for Humanity, and they are partnering on a land acquisition that involves open space as well as affordable housing. The request is for $1.5 million, and the request here again is $1.5 million for acquisition of the land at 48 Benjamin Nye Road, seven and a half acres. This would result in 14 single-family homes, nine three-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms, one four-bedroom. The homes will be deed restricted at 60% of area median income and 80% of area median income. As with the prior application, the town manager's recommendation is to support the full amount requested, but to structure the timing differently with $250,000 for land acquisition and the balance, $1,250,000 for construction. We do have a revised motion that I handed out earlier this evening at your places.
Thank you. You are here from Habitat for Humanity?
I am. I'm Elizabeth Wade. Please call me Beth. I'm the Director of Land Acquisition for Habitat for Humanity. I do have a short PowerPoint presentation, or I can just entertain questions with regard to the project.
Let's start with the questions, okay, because we did not get a copy of your presentation ahead of time, which is helpful. So I'm going to start with Mr. Muscally.
Simply ask, if we went forward with the 250 as the town manager's recommendation, would you still be able to move forward with the project?
We would.
Any other questions?
That sure makes it easier.
That would have been mine, too.
I do have a question about, have you been working with the neighbors at Benjamin Nye's Lane? There's been some issues out there regarding...
Yes, I do understand that, and today I actually, we have been working with the 300 Committee behind the scenes, and I've actually had some conversation with a neighbor to date. But we are planning a public meeting on, not February, on October 9th at the North Falmouth School. School. So, I have already received on Friday the official of Butters List, so there'll be notices going out to those folks, and there will be advertising with regard to those meetings as well.
Thank you. Can we, please, can we not talk? It's very, it's very distracting when someone's up at the podium. Thank you. Any other questions? Ms. Goldstone?
Given your very strong answer that yes, this project would go through with the $250,000 for acquisition, what is the ramification?
It's really an internal ramification with regard to rejiggering how we fund the acquisition. So, unfortunately, our CFO, Peter Brooks, could not be here tonight, but he would share with you that he's had a conversation with our banking partner, Cape Cod Five, and they've assured us of funding towards that acquisition of, I believe, $500,000. So, that leaves a gap of 250, and we're very confident that we will fill that by the time that we go through the local initiative program application, through the ZBA permitting, to get to that point where in January of 2026, we close on the property, we can fill that gap.
Any other questions from the board?
No, pretty familiar with the project. I've been paying attention to it, so I become good.
Would anyone like to move it?
I'll move it. I move that the Select Board acting as trustees of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund award $1.5 million to Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod for the creation of affordable housing at 48 Benjamin Nye Road, to be awarded as a 0% interest loan secured by a mortgage on the property of which $250,000 will be awarded for the land acquisition and $1,250,000 for the construction of 14 affordable deed-restricted homes for ownership on land located at 48 Benjamin Nye Lane, and authorize the town manager to execute the documentation setting forth the terms of the financial award to Habitat for Humanity of Cape Cod.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Let me just ask you if the units will be visitable.
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you very much for that. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? It carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great partnership for development and open space.
Okay, consider the approval of the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund application, 7 Alderberry Lane, Falmouth Housing Trust. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen Bissonette is here with us from the Falmouth Housing Trust. This is a request for $150,000 toward the purchase of a deed restriction for an existing single-family home. So, this is a different, different sort of approach, very cost-effective approach to take an existing house and convert it into an affordable unit. The precedent has been set by Falmouth Housing Trust, as the board may recall. So, that's, I'll let Karen take it away. I think that's pretty much it.
Thank you. We sent in a, I don't, do I see it on here, Peter? If you want it.
I don't think we got, first of all, let me, let me ask any, does anyone have any questions from this board? We got, this is, I'm very aware of this project and support it 1,000%, but questions are straightforward.
Seems like a pretty simple idea.
Yeah, and we've been asking for this, too. We've been asking to be creative and utilize infrastructure that's already in place, so...
I'll just do it very quickly, just for the public. Is that okay?
Certainly may.
Okay, so there is 7 Alderberry. So, there've been a lot of upgrades that the buyer, that the current owners did. So, it is three-bedroom with a bonus room. It's in a wonderful neighborhood, across from the new fields and the Hatchville Fire Station. So, we're looking for a family up to about $146,000. That's 120 of AMI. Just shows you the location. And, as you can see, the house is in great shape. So, just the numbers. So, we're going to purchase it at 573, we have purchased it at 573. There are closing costs and carrying costs. There's a lottery fee to Housing Assistance Corporation, and so that's the total that it will cost. And this is how we get there. I just want to point out that Falmouth Housing Trust is putting in $47,000 of its own resources to be able to do this for the, for the community. And so, we're looking for the $150,000 from the Affordable Housing Fund to be, to be able to do this. That's it?
So, it will be sold to someone for the 390 number?
Yes, 390. And if you approve this tonight, then we will start the lottery process tomorrow, and it will be about a 30-day lottery process, so people can get in applications. We're having a, an open house on October 12th for people to come see the home, but the application will be online on Wednesday, and I will have flyers and will be at social media. So, the reason I want to just do that for the public is I'm hoping that we have a lot of applications for this.
And the lottery pool is...
It will be whomever qualifies, so they need to get...
In the county of Monstival?
Anywhere in the world.
Okay.
That we cannot, we cannot discriminate against anyone. So, we have, we are using, and someone asked me about that, could, does it have to be a Falmouth person? And my response to that is, they will become a Falmouth person. And so, we need young people, we need children, so I don't care where they come from, but I'm hoping that it is a Falmouth person. So, I really encourage people, if they know someone that might qualify, up to just under $150,000. And so, you understand with the lottery, the more bedrooms that are filled, the higher they are on the lottery. So, if you have a parental unit, which is one or two people, and two children, that means they fill the bedrooms. So, those that fill the bedrooms at three have a better chance than, let's say, a single person that just fills one bedroom. So, I just want people to understand that as well.
I just have a question. How do you, how do you work through that during a lottery process?
So, there's an application, and that's why we hire Housing Assistance Corporation. So, you have to get a pre-qualification for a mortgage. So, you have to be able to get a mortgage for the 390.
I understand that, but I mean, how do you separate those when you're throwing the numbers in a bucket and pick one out?
We are, yeah. So, we do, actually do. It's kind of spin it and you pull it out like bingo. And so, those that have, fill the bedrooms go above those that don't.
They get two tickets instead of one?
No, it's just that there is, there is a priority for those at three. So, it, there's a process that, you can come watch it with me if you want to.
I'd like to, yeah.
Yeah, we'll take you with us.
Any other questions or comments from the board? It's a great house.
Madam Chair, you looking for a motion?
I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that acting as trustees of Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund, motion a grant for $150,000 to the Falmouth Housing Trust for the property located at 7 Alderberry Lane, that will be deed restricted at 120% of the area median income, and authorize the town manager to execute the documentation setting forth terms of the financial award to the Falmouth Housing Trust.
I'd second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye, unanimous.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to number six. Request for variance to sign code 184-25, freestanding sign, measurement 184-32, off-premise assigned Woodwell Climate Research Center, 149 Woods Hole Road.
Madam Chair, as an employee of the applicant, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Gina Hebert. I'm the Director of Operations and Board Relations at Woodwell Climate Research Center. Thank you for having me, and Anna Farrington, who is our sign consultant and designer. So, Woodwell Climate Research Center has been growing over the last few years. We've grown in our number of employees, our scope, our work, and we're continuing to push forward on multiple fronts to increase our visibility and grow our brand. And one quite visible way of doing that is a new road sign that we feel will better communicate, will better communicate our brand to quite literally the millions of people who pass by us on Woods Hole Road each year. We're hoping to become a more open campus, welcome more of the public, and all of these steps are towards growing our brand. So, earlier this year, we engaged with Anna to help us, guide us through design, construction, fabrication of a sign that would align with what we're trying to do as an organization while complementing the historic and natural flavor of our, of our campus.
Good evening, Select Board Members. Thank you very much for hearing us this evening. I believe you have these materials already.
We do.
Would you like me to run through the presentation, or would you like to move directly to questions?
Do you have questions on the presentation? You've all had an opportunity to take a look at it.
I thought it was very clearly defined in the pack, but you might want to put it up just briefly with that one with the dimensions for the public.
Which dimensions would be great.
Let's see if I can do that.
There you go.
There, that one, yes.
So, the fabrication of the sign is fairly straightforward. What we're proposing is a custom fabricated aluminum sign cabinet that is not internally illuminated. There are LED sign lights mounted to the top of the sign, which would cast illumination only on the sign face. There would be no overcasting of light. We're also proposing a rough-hewn stone base to replace the post and panel sign that's out there right now. The total square footage for the sign is 25 square feet, which is in excess of the 16 allowed by the code. But we feel like this is a modest request, especially in light of some of the other signage along Woods Hole Road. I'm going to point specifically at Woods Hole Oceanographic Institution, which was also a signage program that I designed and worked with the town of Falmouth to implement at their Quisic Campus and at their Woods Hole Village Campus.
And I would comment, given the fact that we're eliminating the posts, it's not really that much of a change in actual size of structure, so...
And given that fact of the sightline, wouldn't change that much either.
Right.
So, it's worked before.
And that was my concern, on Woods Hole Road.
Right.
In addition to the updates to this identification sign, we're requesting what I'm going to call a trailblazer sign, which is a smaller, single-post sign that would appear north of the campus entrance. There's a bit of a blind curve as you're coming down Woods Hole Road, and we'd like to give visitors a little bit more advanced notice that that turn is coming up. And so, that sign is, looks like this.
What do you do now? Tell them to look for the turbine?
I mean...
I'd say it's a reasonable request because they're on a curve, and I would agree that if I was going there for the first time, I might be going a little faster than I would need to to be able to catch that driveway.
Traffic does travel very quickly on that road.
I agree with Mr. Brown.
Well, I would move approval unless anybody else wants to talk about it or a public comment or...
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion if there's no public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, do we want to read the actual motion?
I'll take a look.
That would be great. Is there anyone here that would like to comment?
Sure, thank you. I would make a motion to approve the applicant's request for a variance to side code 184-25, freestanding sign, and 184-18C, measurement, Woodwell Climate Research Center, 149 Woods Hole Road, as presented.
Madam Chair, I'll second Mr. Brown's motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, next on our list is Joint Base Cape Cod. And Joint Base Cape Cod, I'm going to ask you to respect the board's time of 15 minutes, and I would like to know how many presenters you have.
We're missing one presenter tonight, ma'am, so it's you plus me.
Okay, but you will, you will stay within the time.
I will do my best, ma'am, to stay within your time frame.
Not your best. You will do, you will do it. You really went over last time, and I know that the town manager has spoken to JBCC, and there's a couple of questions, so I want time for questions as well.
Okay. Well, thank you, ma'am. Madam Chairman, board, thanks for having me. My name is Chris Bowe. I'm the Executive Director of Joint Base Cape Cod. I really intend to be brief, my first...
Could you just slide the mic over a little closer?
My real intent tonight is just to introduce my team. I was, I did get a request from Mr. Alan Robinson to give you a quick update on something we're doing with the town and the community, and that's a, we're doing a proof of concept on organic composting on the base. We're, it's conceptual right now. We've got several things we need to do beforehand, but the intent is to identify a location, which we believe we have, and put forth a proof of concept, which would be a smaller construction of a organic composting that would serve the region.
Thank you.
Great.
So, Mr. Johnson asked me to give you that update. I would like to ask, honestly, you know, our intent here tonight is for community outreach and informing the public and yourself. We have always come to this meeting. I do personally believe that to convey the information on a very large military facility with four major commands and myself, I think we need to have a different venue, because 15 minutes is just not enough to give you the information, give the public the information that they need to understand what we do out there. I have no intent, I still want to do this, but I do believe that, I think we should have maybe some leadership in either the town manager or whoever you suggest to come out once a year, or will come to you to give something that's probably in more of the line of an hour.
And if you ever wanted to do that, you could certainly work with the town manager's office to do a presentation to our whole community.
No, no, absolutely. I just, I just, I, this is, this is a wonderful venue, and I thank you for inviting us. I just don't think it's going to fulfill the intent of informing you on what really goes on in Joint Base Cape Cod. All right? My, you know, I want to say thank you for having us. I appreciate the, the support and the camaraderie we've, we've had in the last, my last five years. This will be my last briefing to you as Joint Base Cape Cod Executive Director to this forum. I will be retiring in July, so I just want to extend my thanks.
Congratulations.
I would like to introduce the folks that will be briefing you, so that's myself, number one. Colonel Begalio had a family emergency, so we had to take him off the agenda. If you have any specific questions for Camp Edwards, we'll do our best to answer them, but if we can't, we'll make sure we get to those in writing after the event. Air National Guard is Colonel Miho. She's a, she actually recruits, I mean, commutes to the base, so her more than adequate Deputy Colonel Tim Gordon will be taking the 102nd. Colonel Becker is not, also not available, but we have Major Jacob Speer will be taking care of the PA Paws. And for Joint, excuse me, US Coast Guard, Captain Mike Lackwitz. Captain Bowen Spivak will be handling their individual portions of the briefing. And on that, ma'am, I will be stepping down unless you have any specific questions for me.
I have a question. I don't know who will answer it, but I can wait.
Okay.
Until the end of the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Colonel Tim Gordon, Deputy Commander for the 102nd Intel Wing. I have just a few comments and a couple of slides here tonight. So, just as a general update, I'm pleased to report that our intelligence missions are fully operational as we speak, doing a lot of interesting work for the United States Air Force. This slide, which you've seen before, just highlights our five groups and really the size of our organization, about 1,200 airmen with 30 from the town of Falmouth and 400 of which are full-time. So, just a few, few pictures here, this is my last slide. It kind of illustrates our folks at work and the type of work that they do, whether it be our intel analysts on the top left, behind a desk, looking at a bunch of screens, or our logistics folks loading a cargo plane on the bottom right. We are serving the needs of the United States Air Force. In addition, we have our domestic ops, domestic operations, where we serve the needs of the Commonwealth. You see in the top center, our medical group conducting some first responder training. And our bottom left there, we have our security forces, folks, doing some riot control training. And we're really proud to be able to balance and shift from our federal mission to our state domestic ops missions when needed, based on any emergencies coming, coming from the Commonwealth. And finally, my favorite picture, the bottom right, bottom center, is our honor guard posting the colors at our annual Family Day event. This is something we did last August, a beautiful summer day, and there's a saying in the guard that families are the heart of the guard, and it really is true. We, we have a lot of great airmen, very competent, very much committed, but they can't do what they do without their family support and, and the support of the community. So, we try to take every opportunity to show them our appreciation. So, that's my portion.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Major Jacob Spearing, and it's a pleasure to be here with you guys tonight. So I represent Cape Cod of Pawpaw's here. So we are North America's sole East Coast early warning radar, so we do three missions, essentially missile warning, missile defense, and space surveillance. So missile warning, anybody happens to shoot anything over the North Pole, we're the ones who are going to be warning our national leaders, something's coming. Missile defense will play into the role of potentially shooting down a missile that's coming in. And then finally, space surveillance is making sure that we know where things are in space in low Earth orbit. So you think International Space Station, Starlink satellites, et cetera. And we do a lot of that. Most of our mission, again, is space surveillance. I'll also point out that we have a binational crew, or binational people work there, so Canadians and Americans, as well as hopefully in next year or two, we'll have Brits actually working at Pawpaw's as well as part of an exchange.
All right, I'll go to the next.
And basically, I'll sum this up to thank you for everything that you guys, the community, do for us. This is my second tour here in Massachusetts, and it's been nothing but great. The community support has been awesome. Going down the market basket to get something to eat, you can't go out there without someone coming to you and saying thank you, so I really appreciate that. Unless you have any questions, I'll pass it on. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Captain Mike Lackwitz. This is also my second tour in the air station in Cape Cod. I'll be brief, just a couple of slides. I'm happy to be back. As I said, I was stationed here before. My kids went to West Falmouth preschool long ago, now they're in college, and I'll be retiring here in Falmouth, so I'm looking forward to working with you all long-term and being your neighbors longer than my three-year tour. But for now, this is Air Station Cape Cod. Roughly 200 folks, many of which do live in the Falmouth community, and spouses work in the Falmouth community, et cetera. We have helicopters and we have aircraft, two crews, always on duty, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day, to respond to what our nation needs us for. And for those that have never seen this before, and I know many of you have, we are the sole Coast Guard air operations from the northern tip of New Jersey all the way to Canada and 1,200 miles offshore. So anything in the maritime that needs aviation access from the Coast Guard, it's coming from your local Coast Guard community here. Missions, I know mostly Coast Guard is thought of the search and rescue. That is our bread and butter. That's why we have crews on station 24 hours a day, as I mentioned. A lot of people don't realize, you know, we're actually pretty busy here. One of our busier aircraft, our air stations in the United States Coast Guard, about 200 to 250 annual search and rescue cases a year, including a lot of medevacs off the islands, as well as offshore fishermen in the commercial fishing industry. We've spent a lot of time in the commercial fishing industry, enforcing rules and regulations of our country out there, preserving fish stocks, and ensuring that that's there for a long term. And certainly, we have a lot of local partnerships throughout DHS and DOD, working partnerships with them. And we also have a large volunteer force of the Coast Guard Auxiliary, with all volunteer force flying their own personal aircraft on Coast Guard missions. As I said, we're covering down on quite a long stretch of water, so it always helps to have a little extra support in our back pocket on the local level and volunteer groups that are just phenomenal for us. We also deploy our aircraft. We actually have one down in New York right now for the United Nations General Assembly. We also deploy our fixed-wing aircraft into the Caribbean and South America for counter-narcotics missions routinely throughout the year as well. So certainly busy here and abroad. And again, I'll echo a lot of the other comments on, you know, I've been stationed around the Coast Guard for 25 years. This is definitely my favorite spot to be stationed. A lot of great community support. Really appreciate you all and everything you do for us as well, so happy to serve here with you all.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Sir, have you had any kind of indications or seen any signals or signs that these offshore wind turbine developments are going to pose problems for you during search and rescue?
So from an aviation-only perspective, we are definitely in tune. We're not on the regulation side or any of that kind of piece. So we are definitely working with all those folks to ensure that we, as a search and rescue provider, for example, are considering, if there's wind turbines out there, how will we operate? How will we look for people? How will we hoist people? So we're definitely into the planning phase and responding to a changing environment out offshore.
I've heard speculation, I don't know if it's founded, that there may be impacts during weather events that might affect the radar. Does that sound reasonable?
I'm not, I have not heard that, but, and I'm not really the person to speak on that.
Okay.
Certainly, we, you know, if you all have questions for the Coast Guard, we can, we can take those back and try and get you answers.
Okay, thank you.
The last presenter did say something about significance milestones and projects, wind turbines offset electricity requirements. That's something we may want to know more about at some point, so.
Absolutely. And our, as you know, we have plenty of surface folks around here too, not just aviation, down at Woods Hole and others, so, and they're obviously very in tune with that, those projects.
From your perspective and what you're doing, it might be something to note. Other questions? No? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Chairman, Chairwoman, and Board. Super happy to be here. I was born and raised in Cambridge, Mass., so took the Coast Guard about 17 years. I never thought I'd be stationed here again, and here I am, so thank you, Coast Guard, and for sending me back home. But I'm not as glamorous as Captain Lackwitz is, but we support him and other Coast Guard units to make sure they can do all the amazing missions that we do in the Coast Guard.
Can you move over to the mic?
Oh, yes.
Just so people at home can hear you.
Sorry, I apologize.
No, that's fine.
So what do we do? In addition to Captain Lackwitz and the air station, we have other Coast Guard units on base and in the area. Anyone who's gone to Woods Hole, maybe has seen some Coast Guard assets down there in beautiful Woods Hole. So we can, we can actually go to the next slide for what we do, but we support a whole bunch of commands. And then, what do we do? So not surprisingly, right, facilities engineering, controller, base ops. We do have a clinic, so for Captain Lackwitz's crew to be able to fly, they need to have upchits and flight physicals, makes sense. And we do have MWR, we do have a golf course, which is a little unusual for the Coast Guard. The Air Force has, I think, I don't know how many, but plenty.
(laughing)
But that is unique for us. And of course, you know, pay and just administrative support of our members and orders and all those things that make sure that we get to where we need to go. We do that as well, and we have a small housing footprint on base and then some housing along the Cape as well. So that's really all I have for you today. We support, bottom line, we support our Coast Guard brothers and sisters so they can go out and do the really dangerous and really rewarding missions that we do. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I do have, I have a question, but is there anyone, questions of the last presenter? Go ahead, Doc.
I'm curious if there's any information on their new scaled-down machine gun range program? Is there anything to share?
Could I ask questions regarding that as well?
Don't ask me.
And can I?
So my questions regarding the gun range, you know that the gun range is a, the machine gun range is a major concern.
Yes, ma'am.
And you know that we're concerned about the environmental impacts specifically on our sole source aquifer with the inclusion of a machine gun range out at JBCC. So my questions are, is the National Guard paying the Academy of Natural Sciences to mediate a meeting between the National Guard and the EPA regarding the impacts of the gun range on our sole source aquifer?
First of all, Colonel Begaliot was here to answer the machine gun range question, so I asked him to give me just some quick, because it is an Army project, and as you can see, I'm not an Army officer.
Sure.
I do want to, so he gave me a short list of questions and answers on what's going on. I am aware that there was an article in the newspaper about this National Academy of Science. I know nothing about it, ma'am. I do not, I can find out the answer. I heard about it this morning. As far as I know, I have not heard that issue.
So in his notes, does he address it at all?
No, ma'am. This is just basic questions about the machine gun range.
Okay.
I'm more than happy to hand them to you if that's okay.
That would be great. You can bring them forward. And then my other question, I just want it on the record, is, has the EPA agreed to participate? And when is the meeting going to take place, and will it be open to the public?
Again, ma'am, I don't have the specifics on that.
No, I understand. I want it on the record for our meeting.
Okay.
So that if it's possible, if you could get those questions answered, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Mr. Muscally?
Well, certainly everything in the newspaper, and I was going to ask if anyone wanted to address the criticism that has appeared in the newspaper with respect to this meeting that the chairperson is mentioning, because it seems that that is a closed meeting and that the results are not going to be made public. Now, again, I'm just saying, what was in the newspaper, I'm disappointed that your colleague couldn't be here to, you know, answer what I think would have been-
As am I, sir. He had a family emergency, and I apologize for that. Again, I will get all your questions answered. I was totally blindsided by the article in the newspaper today too, so we will do our best to find out where that information came from, because it did not come from Joint Base Cape Cod, and we'll help track it down for you and answer the questions of the Board. And I do want to reiterate, I think would be best served at a different meeting so we could get into details. We do not have closed meetings like that, so the public will be allowed.
Well, which is why I asked, I framed them as questions.
I understand. And I mean, I can't answer all your other questions, ma'am.
That's fine.
But we are very well aware of public meeting laws, and we adhere to them, so we'll get you information.
I would just say I took the tour last year, and I found it very informative, and I know you have another one coming up if you want to-
So, is it okay to keep going, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay. So yes, I encourage the Board and the citizens of Falmouth to come out and take the tour. I think you'll be enlightened on what actually goes on out of Joint Base Cape Cod and the high level of conservation. So I could tell you this, we have three priorities for our northern training area: water conservation, animal and habitat, and military training. And we take all three of them equally seriously, and we make sure that one does not impact the other. So again, I was confused by the article I was sent this morning, and hopefully we can get you some answers that'll make you more comfortable and make the citizens of Falmouth more comfortable.
That would be great. And I also took the tour with a previous Select Board member, and it was incredible. And the environmental piece was very impressive.
I agree.
I still think, you know, if you could get me those answers, that would be awesome.
Okay.
Thank you.
And again, I encourage you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to report from the Cape Light Compact. Update on their next-
Madam Chair?
For your plan.
Could you take any public comment on the-
I wasn't planning on it, but I could take public comment if you'd like to say something.
Rosemary Carey, Precinct 5. Thank you, Madam Chair, for pressing the guard on information about the multipurpose machine gun range at Joint Base Cape Cod that affects our sole source water aquifer. The Upper Cape Water Supply Reserve was established by Chapter 20, 47 of 2002 Acts to set aside 15,000 acres for the permanent protection and coordinated management plans for the protection and coordinated management plans for water supply, wildlife habitat, open space protection, and all activities consistent with compatible military activities. The land was set aside to be a resource for our towns, Falmouth-born Sandwich and Mashpee, which have been, have suffered greatly over decades of pollution from the base. With the Upper Cape Water Supply remaining intact, clean, drinkable water will be available to the citizens of our town for perpetuity. It's the duty of this Board to do everything in its power to protect our water. The US EPA issued a preliminary report concluding that the gun range is not compatible with military activities because it may contaminate the sole source aquifer to create a significant public health hazard. Yet while awaiting the final determination from the EPA, the Guard is moving ahead with plans to construct a smaller gun range, paying no regard for the EPA study or for Governor Healy's Environmental Management Commission. In this initial construction phase, if the Guard does receive its funding by the end of this month, they do plan to complete the clearing of the area, including 170 acres of Pine Bear and Forest, build three of the eight lanes, and build a tower and some other buildings. And they do intend to come back and build the rest when they get more funds. I know it's getting late, and so clearly the Guard is not respecting the governor-appointed commission, nor is it listening to the concerns of the public. We've been dismissed as being emotional and not fact-based, but if you look at all the comments that have been submitted by this scientific community, they are fact-based and very persuasive. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for taking my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Fame and Silva?
Hi, I'm Sandy Fame and Silva, Precinct 2. And I also am concerned about this particular issue with respect to Joint Base Cape Cod use of the upper 15,000 acres. I've been to these meetings before with our members from the base, and I appreciate the work you do, but I have noticed that the reports are highly sanitized. This issue is never brought up by our guests, even though it's the elephant in the room that we're all thinking about and wondering why something isn't being done about it. I've lived, I lived in West Falmouth since 1984. My well was capped because of the previous pollution problem that we faced. $1.2 billion have been spent cleaning up past contaminations at Joint Base Cape Cod. And we are facing the prospect of more potential pollution of our sole source aquifer called the Sagamore Lens. It actually serves six towns, not just Falmouth, on the Upper Cape, all the way to Barnstable and even West Yarmouth perhaps. And as was mentioned, the uses of the upper 15,000 acres were mandated to be compatible with the environmental concerns for water protection and wildlife habitat protection. So what comes first? The uses or the compatibility issue? If you use the environment inappropriately and it contaminates our sole source aquifer, we are not protecting our wildlife and our water. So we have to first protect the wildlife and the water. And if that means that we cannot do an installation at Joint Base Cape Cod that may contaminate, then we're just going to have to move on. Devon's has been proposed as an appropriate site, and this site now, this proposal has been reduced from eight lanes to three, and the original proposal, it was argued, was, had to be done at Joint Base Cape Cod because of the size of the installation. It could not be done at Devon's. It could not be done in Vermont. It could not be done in New York State. It only had to be done in Cape Cod, where we have a sole source aquifer, which is really a very unique feature in all of the United States. So again, in conclusion, I really feel that we have to be serious about this. We only have one chance to protect our water and our wildlife. Another consideration is cancer. Previously, when the contamination was found in the 1980s and 90s, there were major concerns about cancer. Since then, since I lived there in 1984 and my water was capped, it wasn't necessarily contaminated, but I've had two different cancers, two different surgically removed malignancies. And I'm only one person who's lived in Falmouth, but cancer is a serious problem on Cape Cod, and we have to really reckon with the reality of this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, we're going to move on to the report from the Cape Light Compact, your plan for the next three years.
One fast mouse. Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Maggie Downey, and I'm the administrator for the Cape Light Compact, and I'm going to walk you through 2023, '24, and into the next three-year plan that we're working on, and then- My name is Maggie Downey, and I'm the administrator for the Cape Light Compact. And I'm going to walk you through 2023, '24, and into the next three-year plan that we're working on, and then end it with a slide, a power supply slide that I put in because the last two boards of selectmen have asked me to touch upon it. So I'll leave it up to you as to whether you have questions, and I will move along quickly because I know you've got a very busy agenda. So as I said, I'm Maggie Downey. The Cape Light Compact, for, I know you know, but for the audience, was established by the 15 towns and on the Cape and the six towns on the Vineyard. We are a joint powers entity. We reorganized under the 2016 Municipal Modernization Act as a joint powers entity. We focus on three main things, as you can see on the slide. We negotiate the terms and conditions of a power supply contract. That's the electric contract for all ratepayers on the Cape and Vineyard. We administer the locally, the ratepayer-funded energy efficiency program. And we also advocate for consumers, that is primarily by intervening at the Department of Public Utilities, making sure that the Cape and Vineyard have a seat at the table in Boston on regulatory proceedings that impact electric ratepayers. So 2023, we operate on a calendar year. So this is just a quick summary of what happened in energy efficiency in 2023. We served almost 3,000 residents and businesses in the town of Falmouth and invested over a little over $4 million in incentives that were provided to residential and commercial customers. And I'll talk about that a little bit, what type of incentives and what type of programs. So, energy efficiency highlights for 2024. We offer a no-cost assessment for residents and businesses, and which we will come into your home or business and look for ways to improve the comfort of the home or business, tightening it up with air sealing, weatherization, and also with the goal of lowering your overall KWH, your energy bills, to make sure that customers can afford to stay in their homes and reduce that energy burden. We offer a income-eligible program for customers who make less than 60% of area or state median income, which is, all of the incentives are provided at no cost. Insulation, air sealing, replacement of appliances, as well as heating HVAC systems. We also have a moderate-income program. That's the 61% to 80% that of income, where we offer 100% weatherization. Customers can now self-attest that they are moderate income and receive 100% of income weatherization and insulation. Everyone else, it's a 75%. So if you have $10,000 worth of insulation, that's needed. The program pays 7,500. The customers pay out-of-pocket the other $2,500. We are moving in Massachusetts, along with our climate goals, towards electrification. So we have very generous rebates for installing heat pumps, $10,000 for a whole-home rebate, and about $1,250 per ton for partial installations of heat pumps. $1,250 a ton works out to be about 45 to 5,500 per home if you're going to keep your existing fossil fuel system in place and just install heat pumps to use in the shoulder season or in a portion of your home. Just a couple of highlights. We did have an e-bike rebate for low and moderate-income customers. That's fully subscribed. We, we, those funds were from Mass Clean Energy Center. The compact is always looking for ways to bring in more money for these programs. So we received an e-bike grant. We covered up to 75% of the cost for an e-bike as a form of transportation for low and moderate-income customers. We also offer a suite of instant incentives and rebates for room air conditioners, air purifiers, dehumidifiers, and electric clothes dryers. Again, all Energy Star appliances, and the information on how to obtain those rebates are on our website. We also ran the Cape and Vineyard electrification offering. We had several of your affordable housing partners that we worked with with Habitat. We focused on deed-restricted properties. There is a large one that we're, we're working with in Falmouth that heated with fossil fuels that wanted to fully electrify. So we had, and this, we did a pilot program this year where we came in and removed all of the fossil fuel system, installed whole-home heat pumps, as well as electric stoves, solar PV, so that the overall energy burden and the cost of operating those homes was reduced. So this was a pilot project. I can't, should know, but I can't remember that was a large project in Falmouth that we worked on.
Was it three houses Lewis Neck rode, or is this a different one?
You know what? There's so many of them, Peter, there's 100 on my mind. I will find out and email you when I get back in the office. So apologies for not knowing the name. Something new, as I said. We came upon an announcement, an RFP, from the Mass Climate Bank. They were looking for somebody to be what they call concierge services, because they received a ton of federal money to run the Energy Saver Home Loan Program. And we quickly realized that this was unnatural for the compact to serve in this position. So we, on a long shot, and we actually won, we got the grant to be the concierge service provider for both Cape Cod, Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket. The Energy Saver Loan, this home loan program is, again, targeted toward homeowners. It's a residential program who are low to moderate income. So you can see on the screen, you must own your home, and the homeowner must make less than 135% of area median income, which for us, Barnstable County, is $166,000. And it is, the qualification is the name on the deed. So it doesn't matter who lives in your home. If it is only in Heather Goldstone or Maggie Downey's name, that is the income that determines eligibility. So this is a loan program. You must own it. It must be single-family, and we must demonstrate, say, energy savings of 20%, which there is a model that we will walk customers through. And you say, how do I save any 20%? Insulating your home, installing a new high-efficient heat pump system, those will get you automatically that 20% savings. It's a loans in amounts of $10,000 to $100,000. The first 18 months are only interest. It's 240 months period of time. If you are below 80%, it's a half a percent. So these are very, very affordable loans for our homeowners. And if you are between 81, I should say 81, 81 and 135%, it's a 2% interest rate. Our participating banks, we have our Cape Cod 5, that's our local bank, as well as Bay Coast Savings and Bristol County. So those were picked statewide for the banks to facilitate. And the next slide, and I know you'll have this on your packet, and it'll be available, lists all of the improvements that are eligible for financing through the Energy Saver Home Loan Program. And what happens here is you're able to take the Cape Light Compact's energy efficiency program and then marry it with the Energy Saver Home Loan Program for eligible customers to really do some very affordable and significant improvements to your home. And as you can see, this program covers a lot, a wider array of measures than the energy efficiency program. It does roof repairs, and most importantly, will also do solar when you're pairing it with heat pumps. So this is a great program that we're excited to, just rolling it out now, to offer to the Cape and the islands. And what our role is literally to facilitate a customer's journey. So if you're like, okay, I saw you speaking at this meeting. What does that mean? You call the Cape Light Compact, and our staff will walk you through, make sure you have a home energy assessment. Is this the best product for you? Remember, we still have a zero-interest, seven-year heat loan. Is that better than this rate? And it really is about, what can you manage? A heat loan, zero interest, seven years shorter, higher payments. This one, yes, you're going to have interest, but you're significantly lower payment. So we're here to help customers navigate what improvements can be done? How do you finance it? Should I do this? When should I do it? And then what's the order? That's what the concierge service grant is all about. So I'm really excited about this because there's a lot of gaps. Everybody calls, okay, I've done this, but can I do solar? Or I want to do heat pumps, but I just can't afford $25,000, and your rebate doesn't get me enough. How do I help? I need to do vermiculite, or I have barriers. Help me figure out a way to move forward so that you can take the steps as a homeowner to address and be active and participating in addressing climate change. Another great product that I'm really excited about, because it's taken me four years to get here, is a USDA solar loan program. We are this close to finalizing all of the documents. This is for market-rate customers. It is not income-eligible. You must be able to obtain a loan. And we have, it's a 10-year loan. Our interest, target interest rate is going to be slightly under 3%, and the loan amount is 50,000, up to $50,000 specifically for installing a solar PV system on your home. We will be announcing this and letting all the information out in October. Cape Cod 5, we selected them through a competitive bid process, is the bank that will be administering and servicing the loan. So basically, Cape Light Compact, which is all of us, 21 towns, apply to USDA for the loan, and then the bank will service the loan for us, collect the money, and then we in turn return it back to USDA. So next, moving quickly into the next three-year plan. And there has been a pivot as a result of the recent passed '21 and '22 climate legis, climate law, where we're moving from energy efficiency to energy, to decarbonization. Used to be, everything I had to do was about, can you save a kilowatt hour? The lights that we've done here, the streetlights that we've put in, all of it had to reduce and save energy. Now the law has a lot expanded and is allowing us to assist residents and businesses on their decarbonization journey.
Are those typos on that? Or is that a program that's ending? Is that, that last slide? That's the old program that ended? Because the dates are pretty much in the past now.
No, this is, this will be just starting. This, the decarbonization is going to be starting in '25 to '27.
I'm saying, it says August 31st, 2024, and September 30th, 2024. So that must be the older version.
These are for fossil fuels, sorry. I just, these are for fossil fuel equipment. So the Climate Act banned using energy efficiency rebates to install a natural gas or propane heating system. We're no longer allowed.
Oh, I see. So that is in the past.
Yes, that is in the past. We're no longer allowed to incentivize them. I sent an email out to the town managers last week, reminding everybody, so if town had any, any rebates that they were waiting on, to get them in before, by law, we could not install them. So, yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sorry. So, again, the policy shifted. So the '22 Climate Act, good news, bad news. It took some of the control away locally, because we now have to follow the energy savings and the GHD reductions that the state tells us. So we have, we had a goal, and our programs, we have to be targeted to that goal, which is decarbonization, equity, and improving the customer experience. And those are the three pillars of the next three years that we'll be working on, on energy efficiency and decarbonization plan. So there'll be programs for small businesses continuing with a focus on expanding, focus on allowing insulation and air sealing, not only if you own, but on the Cape and the Vineyard. A lot of our small businesses rent their space, and we always ran into a problem that we did not have a program for small business renters. We now will be expanding that to make sure that renters are, receive the same incentives and the same access to our programs then as the building, as the building owner. We're prioritizing three things. 100% incentives for charitable nonprofits. There are many of our faith-based organizations, churches, libraries, that will be eligible for up to 100% incentives. That information is on our website. There are limits on how much, how big your budget can be, et cetera. This was a program that the compact, our Cape Town, started almost six years ago. It has now been adopted and will be offered statewide by the other utility program administrators. We're going to continue with our Main Streets. We've had lots of success on the Falmouth Main Streets, where we literally do a blitz in advance and then show up for a week, and then we focus on what can we do, lighting changing, refrigeration. So we're there with all of our equipment and trucks in one week to serve, to serve Main Street. We'll also be engaging and continuing to work with community-first partnerships. Very fortunate to work with Rosemary and others on the FCN, Faith Community Environmental Network, where we gave them a small grant where they do energy cafes after different services of faith to talk about what you can do to help energy efficiency. So that's what we'll continue to fund, to give small grants to them as well. Again, this one is, I think I really want to focus on this, because this is really the heart of what the next three-year plan will be working on for energy efficiency. So if you are, as I said, low income eligible, which is below 60% of the area or state median income, you are eligible for 100% no-cost weatherization, barrier mitigation, which means panel upgrades, removal of mold or vermiculite, as well as electrification. Electrification equals heat pumps. That little checklist on that means income verification. We have to verify that you are, in fact, income eligible. These are ratepayer funds, heavily, highly regulated by the Department of Public Utilities. So we're requiring paperwork to document that, which, which program you fit in. If you are moderate income, between 61 or 80%, or you are, regardless of whether you own or rent your space, you are now, if you just self-attest, you'll get 100% cover for weatherization. And with documentation, you will get 100% for barrier mitigation and electrification. Continuing to offer market-rate programs, but expanding what's available for our moderate-income We're also funding Mass CEC to strengthen our diversity and diversify our workforce. Don't need to tell all the towns, but over the next five years, we're losing a significant amount of our workforce in this field, on the, in the field of energy. So we're working hard with our tech schools, with Born Tech, with the Horwich Tech, to make sure that we are training the next generation of workers so that they can take these programs on in the future. Mass save data, a lot of information is out there. I'm giving a lot tonight, but there's tons about what we've done, who's been served, how much energy's been saved, et cetera. This is just lots of marketing, ways to get in touch with us, find the Cape Light Compact. Good news on our power supply rates. Happy to say we're two cents, at least two and a half cents below the utility's basic service.
You are at your 15 minutes, but...
And that's, that's it. I just had a graph to show you where we've been. I've been doing this since 2002. I'm getting long in the tooth, but you can see our electric rates. They're not always the lowest, but they are competitive with the utility's basic service. And we're here to help customers address concerns. And then this slide, I'll just, you've got it in your packet. I'm happy to answer questions. But again, I put it in because my last two towns asked me about, asked me to include something on this, so I just left it in.
Just one question.
Questions, go ahead.
So how does a local person get started? Do they just send you an email?
Yes. You can email me. I'm in the office. Visit, call me. Easy to get hold of. You also have a representative. He's not here tonight. I'm Matt, I have Ron, who's been on my board. I haven't seen you in a long time, hi, Ron. But Matt Patrick is.
Oh, Matt, that's right.
That is our, your current representative. So you've, Falmouth has had great participation since, I don't date myself, but back to 1997. So, again, easy to get ahold of us. Our offices are on the Cape. We just, on our website, or our call centers as well.
Great.
Mr. Muscally?
Yeah, just thinking about ADUs. Are there any incentives for, I know you have the whole, the whole home, $10,000, but what if someone wants to just build an ADU and use heat pumps? Are there incentives for those owners?
So, yes, it, they, you would be, they'd be eligible for the whole-home rebate for an incentive. It depends upon how it's...
So even if it's not replacing something?
Correct.
They would be...
We have a new construction program, and we have a major renovation program. That would, you would be, again, staff is in the office to talk to customers that have questions. Okay, this is what I want to do. What am I eligible? The best thing is to call early, before you make decisions, before you make commitments. Make sure that you're using the right contractors. We have a list for heat pumps vetted. There are thousands of them on the list across the Commonwealth. But again, talk early so that you're going down the right path, and don't commit to something only to find out, oh, that's not an, that wasn't eligible for a rebate.
Any other questions?
Just have one comment, question, comment, combination. You said your policy, your rebates are pretty much guided by the state laws and regulations. I've got to say, as a contractor, I've been helping a lot of people to get rid of the furnaces and put in the heat pumps. I find that the heat pumps don't produce enough BTU, so they end up with two systems, one in the attic, one in the basement for a two-story home. And then they add solar panels. And then in the wintertime, they're a little disappointed after spending all that money that they have these huge electric bills, because the solar panels don't produce that much. And I find that it's actually more cost-effective to use a hybrid with a heat pump with a gas backup, because that, at 34 degrees, that gas backup kicks in. And I think we're kind of throwing the baby out with the bathwater when we say we have to go all-electric. If we just use the fossil fuels sparingly, we might be maybe a little bit better off.
So, again, just to remind everybody, that's a Mass general law that we have to comply with. That's the climate, that is the climate law. I heat with heat pumps, 100%. Made it through, you know, Storm Nemo and everything else, and they work perfectly fine. But I came from an all-electric resist, baseboard resistance house, and my bill has gone down. If you heat with electric resistance, baseboard, oil, or propane, installing whole-home heat pumps, you will see a reduction in your overall energy bill. I agree with you 100%. If you're a natural gas-heated home, you are, you are going to see, you're putting customers in a higher energy burden right now if they remove their natural gas system and heat 100% with heat pumps. Technically, I'm not the engineer, but I know they heat my home, and I'm not cold. And when my sister comes to visit, she puts the heat on. And when my sister comes to visit, she puts the heat on 80, and we're all comfortable.
I'm not saying they don't work. I'm just saying that they're surprised and disappointed that the huge electric bills that they're getting.
Yeah, and you're going to see more of that. It is in, in order for us to hit our GWSA, our Global Warming Solutions Act by 2050, we have a million homes that we have to retrofit. And again, that's, that's the law. So, we're focusing on making sure we hit oil, propane, and electric resistance. And then you're going to see hybrid homes with natural gas.
It's funny, many years ago, I removed electric resistance baseboards and put in a gas furnace, and it got the whole thing paid for.
I know. And before that, remember when they, electricity was going to be too cheap to meter in the 70s? That's why we built all, it's, it is, it is a pendulum.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a nice evening. Get rid of this, Peter?
I just, yeah, escape and close out.
Okay, we are going to move on to reconsider and vote to authorize the town manager to issue a request for proposals to lease the Falmouth Country Club, 630 Carriage Shop Road, to a private operator upon such terms and conditions as he deems acceptable. Mr. Johnson, stop.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just highlight some changes that were made since the first draft that was submitted to the board. One is to require that the private operator fulfill the minimum capital spending requirement within the first 10 years. And that is in response to some concerns that Mr. Mascali raised about the timing of the private operator's capital investment in the golf course over the term of the 25-year lease. Another change that we have made, the base rent has been reduced from 500,000 to 400,000. That's partly because of the front-loaded capital obligation. But to be honest, it's really more so because in reevaluating the financials over the 25 years and taking into account the inflationary pressure on the private operator's expenditures over that period of time, we were concerned that we were not allowing enough revenue for the private operator to be able to meet, meet their costs and, and turn a profit and, and invest in capital as we are requiring them to do in this lease. Along the same lines, we've increased the revenue share threshold from 1.4 million to 1,750. So, again, that would mean you take the operator's gross revenue and any amount that's over the threshold. So, now we're proposing that to be at 1,750. The revenue share of 40% or more, depending on what the operator bids, would apply above that revenue, revenue threshold, which is now at 1,750. The, another change in the lease identified by Mr. Brown is that we've included a provision that gives the town the right to install a collection tank for treated wastewater in the unlikely event that all of our more preferred alternatives are not successful, primarily the outfall pipe. And that's been done in a way to minimize what the potential disruption to the golf operation might be. So, in, in summary, we feel that these lease terms will meet the town's financial requirements to cover debt and will generate funds for the town that can be used to pay back the general fund for prior year golf course costs, not supported by golf revenues. And these terms will also, these financial terms will also generate a surplus that can be invested in capital improvements at the golf course at the town's discretion through the capital planning process with the Select Board, Finance Committee, and Town Meeting Review. Happy to entertain any questions.
Questions from the board? Mr. Mascali?
A few. With respect to the annual threshold, and we're asking the bidders to start at 40 and they could possibly go. Was there any consideration in letting the bidders basically propose what that minimum annual threshold would be? To see maybe some would be willing to set it at a million five or a million six? I mean, if we're asking them to, you know, throw in their, their thoughts about the percentage, why not ask them to think about, or give us a proposal with respect to the minimum threshold? Has that been considered at all?
Yes. The, it, it was considered, and I, you know, I, I believe the bidders would prefer it that way, to be honest. But the reason that I did not propose that is because it has the potential to leave an ambiguous result with respect to valuing one proposal versus another. Because if you have, right now, I've, I've locked everything down except for one variable. So, there's no question about how the financials are going to compare to one another. But if I have one bidder at 1.5 and another at 1,700, and they're proposing different percentages, we don't necessarily know which one is going to deliver more revenue to the town.
Okay, just, just a couple of more comments. And, and I certainly appreciate you and Mr. Renshaw going back to the drawing board and adjusting the, you know, the, the capital to the first, first 10 years. I, I still think that, well, let me, let me say that I understand that you dropped the, the minimum rent to 400,000 to accommodate that, that capital improvement within the first 10 years. I do think that after the 10 years, I think the base rent should actually go back up to the 500,000 that we were originally talking about. I think that would be a, a benefit. I think if it goes up 2% a year, it'll get close to that 500,000 in any event. And to that point, I have had some involvement in leases with adjustments and so forth. I, I'm not sure I've ever seen a, an adjustment on an annual basis to base rent that was not set and was dependent upon how well the operator is doing. So, I, I question whether it should just be a straight 2% a year and take out that clause that provided the operator's gross revenue has increased by 2%. And that's a little unusual in most lease, lease negotiations, in my opinion.
So, it, it is unusual, but it's informed by the history of golf on the Cape. You know, there, there have been periods of 10 years where the gross revenues don't go up. And when, you know, we're putting all these pieces together, right? It's also unusual to do a 25-year lease. So, the idea here is we want to make sure that the private operator can be successful over that long period of time.
Okay, and just one other thing, and I, I know that you're familiar with the OIG's report back in, in 2009. And I think we've discussed, but I wasn't sure if I saw or hear about the requirement that there would be annual audited statements?
It's in there, yes.
And, and what about having us go in and be able to audit their records, which is one of the recommendations?
That's in there, too.
Of the.
It's in there, yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
It's in there, I read it.
I thought I saw it.
I think we've addressed that, yeah.
Any other comments from the board?
I would comment that I had a couple of more questions about the ownership of the equipment, which I asked Mr. Johnson Staub earlier and got a good answer that, you know, they've signed up that they're going to provide care and custody of the equipment and maintain it in good condition and be responsible for it. And it's essentially being leased to them rather than a matter of ownership. Because I questioned whether or not, if an expensive lawn mower breaks and is unreparable in the first few years, what happens to it? And if it's, does a person buy a new one to replace it? And my, my answer was that it's considered a lease condition. Could you, could you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure. So, you know, let's just take, that's a great example, take a mower. And we can talk generically, could, you know, the mowers could cost 20,000 or it could cost over 100,000 depending on the mower. But if it, if it breaks down because of misuse or because it's reached the end of its life, for the first 20 years of the lease, the town's not paying for any equipment. So, if they need the equipment, they need to replace it, they're going to pay for a replacement. Any equipment owned by the town, if, if it is deemed surplus and not usable anymore, they, you know, they can't create a junk pile. They have to maintain the property. They would need the town's approval to declare it surplus, and if there's any salvage value, the town would get the salvage value. And then just a reminder, the general structure for equipment, the operator is on their own to replace equipment for the first 20 years. And then the last five years, the town is making a minimum investment of $100,000 per year in equipment. And the reason for that is so that at the end of the 25-year lease, there is an inventory that the town owns that makes it easier for a new operator to come in without a huge investment in equipment.
So, the only liability for us is that if we're providing equipment that's onsite now, that fails, when it's replaced, it won't be ours. And when they leave, they take it. But essentially, we're not really losing anything because it wasn't that great to begin with.
Right. And, and it's in their interest. If it's usable, they're going to want to repair it and use it as long as they can.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say, in terms of the, the revenue model along the lines that Mr. Mascali was noting, I wonder if, if there's an option to set a floor but allow the, the bidders to say, okay, that, you know, set a threshold above a certain minimum, right? So, we're not completely opening it up, but it does speak to, I, I think both risk tolerance on both sides and also the, the nature of the partnership in terms of, are we just setting a, a set floor and then saying, okay, how much are you going to give us above that? Or what's that kind of give and take in that, that revenue sharing model for, for different, different business owners and operators? I'm not sure what others on the, on the board think about that.
I just, I, I think it just makes it more difficult to compare apples to apples. I think that was the logic, and I, not being an expert, I would have to agree with that logic.
Mr. Zansky?
Having a little experience, or a lot of experience, looking at contracts like that, when, when you dilute the variables, it, it makes it so complex. When you have, especially, we'd want a bunch of bidders, we'd want to have a, it, the, the time and money you lose with trying to identify what, what's real and what isn't, and what we, I think, I, I think keeping it simple for all of them makes it a fairer and more legitimate bid process that, and it doesn't hold time up. When you, when you throw things out there like, you know, be creative, this and that, and there's a, and there's a timeline on your bid, right? It just circumvents all, all the necessities that, that put a solid document together, in, in my experience at work. I mean, everybody wants to have the same information. And that's just my personal.
The other thing I think is important is that I think this lease is designed to make the operator successful. And I don't think we want to get too greedy because we're in a pretty good position right now, and we are making money anyway. And, and in what, 10 years, it'll be paid off, and we're going to be even in better position. So, I think, I like the fact that it makes them more likely to be successful, especially going into a 25-year contract. We don't want them to struggle halfway through and have to reinvent the wheel and start over, so.
I mean, I'll just reiterate, my, my biggest objection is the, the, the 2% accelerator every year being dependent upon their revenues exceeding 2%. I just think that's not a good idea.
From a business standpoint, I would agree. But from a municipal management standpoint, I think it does make sense. Mr. Ryan?
I think we want to try and get as, as much as we can out of, you know, out of, out of the course. I think escalators are, are normal and not generally related to necessarily how well the operator's doing. That's, that's the operator's.
I hear you. As long as we help them, as long as we help them be successful, we'll get it.
I think we had some testimony, too, if I may, from Mr., Mr. Murphy, that these are all, to some extent, boilerplate, where they just plug this into their programs to create a bid, whether it works for them or not. So, I think, again, keeping it as uniformed as we can is the way to go. That's how I would, I mean, I was happy with the first one, but.
I'm happier with this one.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? And it looks like we may have, I will take public comment.
No, I have nothing to say.
Okay.
I may have something after him. Keep an eye on Bob.
I, I don't usually time them.
Bob Young, Precinct 5. I spoke on this last time, I've written to the board also. The last time we met, the question was the length of the contract was a question, and the amount of capital. He's kind of addressed the capital issue, so to speak. But slashing the base rent from 500,000 to 400,000 seems too low. We've been at 400,000 since 2014, that's 10 years ago. I could see a modest increase, maybe to 450. 500,000 seemed a little bit too high. You should definitely bump that up. But we take another hit by increasing that threshold to 1.75 million, where it was 1.42. You could increase that a little, but the town's revenue share is going to be really severely impacted by raising that up to 1.7. It's, I think it's too high. I think those two should be brought back. And the third thing I'd like to say is, we've been putting 50,000 into this course every year. It's our course, we own it. We don't have anything going into it. We're not investing in our own property. Having the operator put in 100,000 is good, but the town should also have an investment in this, in this property. So, 150,000 a year is a good amount for capital. The amount of money that this course is giving the town, we can do that and still have a healthy return to the town. So, I, I think the 400,000 is just, keeping that for another 10 years is too low. Even adding 2% is not going to be enough. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond to that.
Go ahead.
So, I, I would agree that over the course of this 25 years, the town is going to need to invest in this asset. But the point is, we don't need to make a commitment in this lease as to what those amounts are. So, the purpose here is to, you know, these financials will generate revenue for the town that can be reinvested. How much and when, that's for us to decide, not for the private operator necessarily.
Thank you.
Could you respond to the, the question about the rent? Why, what was the thinking?
Yeah, the, so I, I looked at, I got some, I got some second-hand feedback that the town was taking too much money and that it was going to scare some bidders off. So, I did a little more research in terms of what is being spent at some of the municipal golf courses in the area, just the expenditure side. And, and they're municipally run, the courses that I looked at, because that's where the available data is. And they're spending a lot more money than what the operator at Falmouth Country Club has been spending, spending over the course of the last 15 years. So, if I take that number, that 18-hole number, and apply what I thought was going to be the expenditures based on the history here, it, it, it wasn't adding up. And then also running a pro forma out 30 years and looking at the inflation impact on those, on the expense side over that 30-year period. You know, if you assume a 2% to 3% to 4%, you know, probably a 3% is more of a reasonable inflation adjustment on the expense side. Combining that with the amount of revenue that we were taking out, it didn't, it didn't seem to be enough money for the operator.
And that's where the negotiation will come in about the capital investments and town's sharing?
Right. So, you know, we'll, we'll find out when, you know, if we get responses back. And, and, you know, hopefully, we get two or three really good quality bidders. And if they're both bidding the bare minimum, then that would say, I guess we were pretty aggressive, right? On the other hand, if it comes back and, you know, one of the, they're putting in a percentage of 45, 50% revenue share, and instead of 2 million in capital, they're up at 5 million, then it says, okay, you know, there was, there was some room there for the private operators. You know, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't have perfect insight as to what the perfect number is. We're going to issue the bid. There is a, an opportunity for potential bidders to submit questions. And then through the, our regulatory process, or regulated process, any answers that we give have to be in writing and sent out to everyone who's obtained the specifications. So, you know, if we get feedback that, you know, something is amiss, something with the structure is wrong, and it's shared by multiple operators, we could consider amending the lease. Hopefully, we don't hear that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns regarding this lease? I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval as a written motion here. Is there a written motion here?
I believe there is.
The motion, there are two, actually, motions.
Yep.
And they're in the agenda summary. Do you want me to read it, or you have?
I can, I can read them for you.
Okay, great.
Move that the select board declare the Falmouth Country Club property at 630 Carriage Shop Road as surplus, and move that the select board authorize the town manager to execute and issue a request for proposals to lease the Falmouth Country Club 630 Carriage Shop Road to a private operator as presented with any technical corrections and revisions deemed necessary.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes at a four to one. Okay, we will move on to the presentation of petition articles for the November 2024 town meeting.
The five, Madam Chair?
Yes, and we're doing five minutes on each. First one, presentation, present petition article 20, authorize disposition of zero West Falmouth Highway for affordable housing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Addie Vaquero Drolet from Precinct 9, the petitioner of Articles 20, 21, and 22, and I'm also the president of the Housing Trust. So I have a letter, Laura's not able to be here, but we just wanted to read a brief statement, and we can go through each item if you want to do it that way, or you just want to go straight to the parcels.
No, we're not voting. No, they're just presentations. You can do each one.
Okay, so, just so everyone's aware of the history, we filed three articles because we've been waiting or trying since 2018 to identify some parcels from the housing production plan, as it was approved back then. A high priority then was the strategy in years one and two to make town-owned land affordable for housing. Falmouth Housing Trust has been working with the town staff for about five years on identifying town land, and our board decided that it was time for us to take the initiative and put some articles out there for the warrant. Given the passage of time since 2018, again, 2024, the housing production plan again addresses the petitioning town meeting to authorize the select board to issue RFPs or otherwise convey three parcels of land for affordable housing. So then, 20 Brigantine Drive, it's a nice little residential neighborhood, square footage is 27,935, it's located in, off of Boxbury Hill Road, it has 244.32 feet of frontage on Brigantine, it's located on the corner of Brigantine and Cutter. We believe this one is suitable for a two-bedroom, single-family home, not unlike the ones we are proposing for 419 McCoy Highway. Any questions on, that's the first one, Article 20?
Well, it's West Falmouth Highway, actually.
That's 22.
Oh.
Brigantine Drive is Article 22.
I'm sorry, forgive me, Brigantine is 22.
That's okay, so any questions on 22? Okay, let's, why don't you go to Article 20, and then do 21?
So 20, I believe, I think I, mine are misnumbered, so I apologize.
Zero West Falmouth Highway.
It's West Falmouth Highway. This is, this is the largest parcel proposed, this is probably the most challenging parcel because a state curb cut would be required. And because we're the Falmouth Housing Trust, we always like to find a good challenge, so this would be one, but we're not opposed to it. It's two and a half acres, and we feel that we could probably get two or three homes in there.
Okay, Article 21, Pheasant Lane?
That's the Pheasant Lane parcel that the town owns, that's, again, we have some experience in Pheasant Lane, it's a very nice development of single-family homes, and there's a perfect lot there. I think it has adequate frontage, and we could put a three-bedroom in there as well.
Any questions on Articles 20, 21, or 22?
No, I can't argue the logic of trying to give it a shot to develop them.
Mr. Muscally?
No.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and our last presentation, petition article 23, Fund Urine Divergence Pilot Project.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Earl Barnhart. In April 2024, the town meeting made it clear that it wanted the town administration to come back in November with a urine diversion pilot project planned to vote on. When we learned that the town was not planning to present an article, we filed this petitioner's article. Falmouth needs the results from a urine diversion pilot project as soon as possible to minimize costs of future mandated sewers and mandated IA septic systems. The town currently plans to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on additional sewer-ing of south coast estuaries. Presently, new sewer projects on the Cape cost over $100,000 per parcel. In addition, the town currently plans to mandate about 5,000 innovative and alternative septic systems to reach the nitrogen reduction goals of its estuaries. Without town subsidies, these IAs will cost Falmouth homeowners about $450 million, according to Steve Rafferty, Chair of the Water Quality Management Committee in his August 14 committee meeting. The town cannot afford to subsidize the installation of these mandated IAs with $450 million. And according to Ed Santeo, $450 million of subsidies is not currently included in Falmouth's capital plan. These huge financial costs of sewer-ing and IA installations will destabilize our town's economy, make Falmouth, make living in Falmouth even more affordable than it already is, and will produce huge amounts of greenhouse gas emissions. 20-year plans for sewers and IAs will delay cleaning our waters. Falmouth should start this urine diversion pilot project as soon as possible to test this promising alternative that could reduce sewer-ing and IA installations, reduce costs, and reduce the time needed to clean our waters. There have been several important recent developments regarding the urine diversion pilot project. In a meeting on August 27, MassDEP determined that the town can measure urine nutrients that are collected and removed from a particular watershed to claim credit for those nutrients towards watershed targets. With this approach, urine diversion participants would have the freedom to install any number of urine-diverting toilets or fixtures and to use them at any intensity they desire during and after the pilot project. This newly determined watershed-scale nutrient accounting system, and with this newly determined watershed-scale nutrient accounting approach, the town may be able to achieve the same objectives by piloting less than 50 urine diversion installations for a period of less than three years. We foresee that these recent MassDEP determinations will result in a significantly reduced cost of the urine diversion pilot project, likely less than the 1.9 million in the current article. Also recently, in a September 11 memo, Ed Santeo stated that there is unspent money available in grant funds from the Air Force Center for Environmental Excellence that were previously allocated to a sewer project that could be applied towards the urine diversion pilot project. Postponing a town article postpones the urine diversion pilot project for eight months or more, and halts MazTech's work to proceed with this pilot project. MazTEC is eager to proceed. Many Falmouth residents are eager to participate. There are Falmouth residents willing to pay for the costs of urine-diverting fixtures themselves. Falmouth's polluted water and Falmouth's residents can't afford to wait. Let's fund MazTech now so that MazTech can continue planning and executing the urine diversion pilot project and provide the data needed to incorporate urine diversion into Falmouth's watershed plans as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Didn't MazTech send us a letter saying that they weren't really ready yet to proceed? Yes, and are we still waiting for approval for the plumbing fixtures?
We are. Plumbing board approval, right.
Those are pretty big roadblocks.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on. Number 12, Consider the Adoption of the FY26 Operating Budget. Mr. Johnson Staub?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have in your packet this evening a proposal for the FY26 operating budget policy. It is not terribly different from the budget policy that was adopted for the current fiscal The policy does recognize the importance of future strategic planning workshops in identifying and prioritizing new initiatives and projects for projected revenue. Happy to entertain any questions the board may have.
Questions?
Sounds like a reasonable policy to me.
Any questions, comments? I would entertain a motion.
Is there a written one?
There is, and it reads, "A motion to adopt the FY26 operating budget policy document as presented."
I'll second it.
Okay, why don't you, I read it, but you moved it.
I'll move that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. All right, we did our minutes, we have no town managers supplemental. How about select board reports?
On my part, nothing other than what was mentioned before about the One Cape Summit and the wonderful programs and presentations that were there. They do a wonderful job, and that's about it from my side.
Okay, Mr. Muscally?
Ms. Goldstone? I attended the public meeting on the parking study, downtown parking study, which was not, I would say, heavily attended, but those who were there were very invested, and there were a lot of really interesting strategies presented and some really thoughtful discussion, and I'll be interested. I didn't stay to tally where dots were put on all of the posters in terms of where public interest in the different strategies was strongest, but it was a good meeting.
Excellent.
I was there as well, and it was interesting that the conclusion of the consultant was that we don't have a parking problem in town, but that we have a problem letting people know where parking might be available for them, so that was one of the conclusions.
Interesting takeaway. Mr. Brown?
I found it interesting that one of the presenters at the One Cape Summit said we should just get rid of all of our parking regulations and let business take its course. Pretty interesting, because they're identifying all the roadblocks to constructing, and the other thing that was very interesting was the concept of pre-approved plans. So you have a stockpile of plans, I don't know how many designs you'd want to promulgate, but maybe six or eight or 10 that are architecturally correct for historic districts as well, and then if a developer wants to come along and build a house, he can just choose one off the rack and say, I'm using this, and takes away all the roadblocks because it's already, well, not the site roadblocks, but the construction roadblocks. And so it was interesting that the focus on the One Cape Summit was really about housing and obstacles to building housing and ideas for making it more practical to build. So I really liked the summit this year.
My only report is you all received a letter from the school committee and the superintendent about the schools and what they're proposing in terms of universal childcare and repurposing the Morse Pond School, and I will be on their committee, their Building Needs Committee, which begins this Wednesday night. I will be a member, as well as Mr. Renshaw will be joining that committee as well. So it'll be interesting to see where it goes and how we can make it work.
Interesting timing, and we just talked about that at our strategic planning session in Sherreford, they were already working on it. It's good.
It's good.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a...
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.